Hello.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hello, Andrew.
Somebody dropping some things there?
Sounds like it. I don't see anybody falling out of their chairs, so it must be something. You have some strange background noises from time to time.
Well, I'll warn you right now, there is a cat on this table.
And I suspect Tim has a dog in his lap.
Any minute now.
I don't think Tim has any choice about that.
I don't think you have any choice about the cat either, so.
Dogs are supposed to be obedient, cats, you know.
My dogs didn't get that memo.
Mine neither. Mine didn't either.
Oh, well, it's okay. We're all here. That's good. Looks like we're all here and it is 6:30 on Monday, February the 8th. And I'd call the media order and I'd invite you all to please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. Indemnity, justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, several announcements here this evening to share with you all. First of all, we have several attendees who were identified only by residents or their first name. If you could please put your name in the chat, so we have an accurate record of who was in attendance, it would be helpful. So, I'd like to remind you all that Monday is President's Day and both the city and Board of Public Works offices will be closed. Also, remind you that city offices remain closed for the public, but we do have a walk-up window and most everything you want to do can be done online. And I would encourage you to do, either use the walk-up window if you have something to drop off, or use the online access points. Our budget hearings began on last Friday and they will continue this coming Friday, the 12th. Then on subsequent Fridays, the 19th to 26th, the 5th of March, the 12th of March. And then hopefully on the 15th Monday evening, we will approve the budget. There are several other things. This is a very long agenda. And I want to tell every, yes?
Just a suggestion. If Anne Marie has a sketch out of who, what issues, what departments, what matters are going to be at each of those meetings, it might be helpful so that.
Post those on the website. That's great. With the agenda.
For the budget meetings, it's listed on the agendas that are on the website, so if people want to.
I didn't realize that. So if I didn't, I bet others didn't too. So if there's anything that people want to, in particular are interested in in budget, take a look at those agendas. They're every Friday at 1:00 PM for the foreseeable future. And so you probably identify which your particular area of interest will be discussed. Thank you.
And one, one point of note is that on February 26th, it will be the, the various committees and commissions. So, you know, if you're affiliated with one of the, the committees, commissions, boards that has a budget request, you might want to make a point to attend that day.
Okay, great. Thank you. Obviously, we have many budget hearings coming up, so there actually in total, there are six more to go, including the budget approval. So there's plenty of opportunity for the public to get involved. I noticed we've had, we're now up to 20 attendees. Again, I remind people that if you're not identified by name, first and last name, please do identify yourself in the chat, so we do have an accurate record of those who are attending. In reference to additions and deletions, I started to say that this is a very long agenda tonight and recognizing the length of this agenda and the fact that we do all do get exhausted at some point, we will be breaking this into a second session. So we will recess tonight after we can finish the complete, and after we complete the work on the unfinished business section of this agenda with minor exceptions. So we will pick up the new items on the, that were listed on the agenda at our meeting on Thursday evening at 6:30 and there'll be another Zoom link sent out for that. So if you're here to attend to or listen to discussion of new items on the agenda or new business, that will all be taken up on Thursday evening this week. However, there are a couple minor changes that I want to make in addition to that, and that is we will be deleting I-4 from the, from the agenda completely on Thursday as well as it is part of the budget process. And actually, I-8, which is one new business item that we have, it's got a little time sensitivity to it, so we're going to take care of that this evening. And then we'll recess right after we complete that and we'll be deferring action on item H-8 this evening as well. Other than that, I think that's all the announcements I have. Does anyone else have announcements they would like to make before we get started? Hearing none, move on then to item E1, which is presentation possible action, the appointment of the Board of Elections. I've spoken with Joan Reader, Nina Canata, and Dee Lot, who have previously served on our Board of Elections, and all of these women have agreed to serve again on our Board of Elections, and I would ask Council's approval of that to confirm that of those appointments.
Salute.
Okay, we have a motion from Bonnie, a second from Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving then to item E2, is presentation possible action on the appointment of the Board of Ethics to, to fulfill the vacancy, the expired term of Michael Kraus. I have spoken with Rick Greer Reynolds, who has agreed to serve, and I would ask Council's confirmation of that appointment.
I so move.
Thank you, Rob. Is there a second? Okay, Andrew, thank you.
Just a bit of discussion, Mayor. You didn't, you didn't mention that it was, it might be mentioned, it was Michael's decision not to serve again. He served the city in many capacities for, I think, almost 30 years.
Yeah, and I did mention that at last month's meeting, and we are very appreciative of Michael's long-term service to the city, and we thank him for that. And at the appropriate time when we can gather all the people who stepped off of our various committees, we will hopefully will join us for our meetings, so we can recognize them in person.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the appointment to the Board of Ethics. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on then to item F, which is a consent agenda. That includes the mayor and city council meeting minutes from Capitol Projects of December 10th, 2019, and the meeting minutes from Capitol Project of November 13th, 2019. The Financial Activity Report, the Police Activity Report, and the Fire Department Activity Report. Other item listed in the consent agenda is a Board of Public Works meeting minutes, however, we do not have those. So I would ask for a motion regarding the consent agenda for the items that we have.
Mayor, I'd like to ask two things about the, one about the minutes and one about the Police Department report. Other than that, I would so move.
Okay, so we'll pull those two items out. Do we have a second to consider the others as a consent agenda? Okay, all in favor of the items?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, Rob, let's take up your question regarding Capitol Projects meeting minutes.
And Marie, as to the minutes, all I would like to ask, and I think I know the answer is, once our minutes, if we approve minutes of a meeting, are they then posted to the agenda of the meeting to which they refer?
Yes, so it wouldn't be on the agenda. It's that if you go to the agenda, there's a box at the top that says Agenda and a box at the top that says Minutes, and it would be.
And they will be posted there. That's great. On the police report, the chief, I just had a couple of questions. You've, let's see. Where the out-of-jurisdiction assists include a, a bank robbery search in, in aid of the Delaware State Police, and he says location of assist, C.R., M.H.P. What is that?
Sorry, mobile home park, Rob. It's just down Route 1 South, over the past 24, so mobile home park.
Thank you. And then you had two persons arrested. Were those separate incidents or a single incident?
Separate incidents.
And three theft complaints. Were there any arrests coming out of those theft complaints?
No.
And the four traffic tickets and one warning. Where were they? Where did those tickets get issued?
Yeah, I don't have that information. I can certainly get it to you if you're interested.
It's not important. I just thought it would be interesting to know where your troops are finding speeding. It's a pretty light, pretty light list. Is there a reason for that, do you think?
Yeah, it's still due to the COVID restrictions we have in place. I've recently lifted those, and I think you'll see significant more activity, certainly for February.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay, so we had held up the consent agenda and regarding the minutes and the police activity report, doing the motion to approve those two reports.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Tim, you are muted, so we can't hear you. It's okay. You're raising your hand, so we are seeing you, but we are not hearing you. Okay, then moving on to item G, which is Presentation City Managers Report. Anne Marie?
Hi, well, I'll start by saying we've got two active construction projects going on. One is the water main replacement and rebuild of Coleman Avenue and resurfacing of East Fourth Street. So obviously, in the past couple of weeks, the weather has, has kind of, we've lost a couple of days to that. Additionally, the Board of Public Works is still working on their project to replace the water main on Pilot Town Road. They're also replacing some water services, and I believe they are lining the sewer in some areas, which they've also done in the Coleman Net Avenue area. You know, we're, we're still trying to stay on top of things with COVID. We meet every two weeks, the mayor and Ellen Lorraine and I participate in a, a meeting with the governor and his staff and the other municipal governments. And we try to, you know, we, we got information there and we share what we got. We also share the concerns that, that we're hearing from, from this area. The Board of Health is continuing to meet every three weeks or so, so they met twice in January. We've had seven of our police officers vaccinated. Most of those have had both doses and, and others are waiting for the second dose scheduled. In the cases where they haven't gotten it, it's because their time's not up yet to get it. So the vaccination, I think most people know, is that the state at this point is offering the vaccine to Delawareans who are 65 years of age or older. They're asking for people to be patient. We are, the, the state is getting, I think they said about 20,000 doses a week. And when you think everybody who gets a dose needs a second dose, it's obviously going to take a while before we get mass vaccination and the, the 65-plus portion of the, the population in Delaware is this significant. So that's going to be a couple of months that they're working on that. So regardless of whether you've had the, the vaccine, mask-wearing, hand washing, and social distance will continue to be important for the foreseeable future. Let's see, the, the West Cedar Street flood study is moving along. GMB has completed the collection of data from the, the survey they had put out, and they're developing a number of flood mitigation alternatives. There was a public meeting back in November, and now GMB is preparing the, the draft final report. So that should be getting to the city and FEMA in the, in this quarter of the year. The downtown and beach parking committees have continued to meet through January, and they've completed their recommendation reports, which are on the agenda for this evening. So the downtown parking is under old business because there were some recommendations discussed last month, and the beach parking is under new business, which means that that would be pushed until, till Thursday. So I'm sure everybody's looking forward to hearing the results of both of those. The pickleball committee that was created under the Parks and Rec Commission held their second meeting. They'll meet again next week on February 10th. That's not next week, that's this week. The Association of Coastal Towns met in January. They met again on, the mayors and managers met on February 4th. They will have their quarterly meeting on March 4th. The mayor, Mr. Davis and Mr. Mandalis and I have met with the Lewis Historical Society regarding the net real. At this point, there is an extension in place until the beginning of March. We put out an invitation for bids for cleaning of the city buildings, so we, we will be discussing those results with you all on, during our budget meetings. On January 8th, Janelle Cornwell and I met with Rick Quill and his attorney about the source water protection overlay. We had a follow-up discussion with Denrec staff, and then we had a call with Janelle, myself, Mr. Quill, and his representatives and Denrec staff. So we are trying to work through some of those challenges. We had our bi-monthly meeting with Chesapeake, Mayor Becker, Presley, Darren Gordon, and I participated in that on January 11th. Our D-FIT trustee meeting was held on January 13th. Mayor Becker is the, is the chair of the Board of Trustees for our insurance trust. Mayor Becker and I attended a Zoom meeting that Senator Coons held with municipal leaders in Delaware, talked about a lot of things, the pandemic, the vaccine. You know, just, it was an opportunity for the towns to, to hear directly from the senator and to share concerns with the senator. Chief Spell and I participated in interviews for a number of finalists for the vacant police positions. I attended the Five Points Working Group workshop, or not workshop, regular meeting on January 25th, so they're meeting quarterly at this point. I met also with the architect and representatives from the Cape Henlopen School District on January 29th, and that was about the middle school building, which will be constructed where Shields is now. And last but not least, the mayor and I met with Gerard Kouska and others associated with the Mid-Atlantic Regional Association of Coastal Ocean Observing System. That's, so they're a nonprofit organization that has radar stations set up various places along the coast, and, and they help to monitor kind of the weather and all of the atmospheric stuff. So they will be submitting a proposal that we will bring forward to mayor and city council at a future meeting. So that is what I have.
Thank you very much, Anne Marie. As, as it wasn't known already, a very busy month. And between what you've put in the, in your report and what's on this agenda, I think even though we're dealing with a pandemic, City Hall is far from quiet. Yes, Bonnie, you've got, you're muted.
That's a first. Amber, just a quick question. I sort of lost track of what's been going on with the Five Points Working Group. Give us the high points of what you all are focusing on right now?
Yeah, so every, every meeting, we kind of go through all of the recommendations and everything where there's been some progress. So in a number of cases, the progress has really been that the working group had said, please, you know, study this intersection or study, you know, so they've initiated studies on things. In some cases, they report back about the Capitol Project. So it's really just a lot of information sharing, and then typically they have a presentation on, on a specific issue. In, in this particular meeting, they had a presentation about the, the results of the TID, Transportation Improvement District Study, and, and where they are with the county with the, the TID.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd just make one more comment about the meeting we have with Dr. Kouska. This organization has monitors the coastal wave action from Hatteras all the way up to Maine. And they at this point have 46 different sounding points, and there's one currently located in Cape Henlopen State Park. And they're looking to possibly relocate another one in, in this area, which would give them better information about what's going on here at the mouth of the Delaware Bay. Very interesting discussion. And I'm sure as we get, as they formulate whatever they're trying to put together, there'll be a lot more to share. Are there any other questions? Yes, Rob?
A small question. Anne Marie, I saw that one of the building permits that the city issued, which were a dune crossing, can you tell us about that?
Yeah, so that was the Pilot Point Homeowners Association for their beach access, and that was, they also had a permit from Denrec for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I think we can accept Anne Marie's report by common consensus. We can move then on to item H1, which is Presentation Possible Action Regarding Amending the Zoning Map for Parcel Sussex County Tax Map 335-4.20-189 and 190.00 located at 203 Savannah Road and Cape Henlopen Drive to revert from zoning classification from R3 back to GC, or General Commercial. This was a packet of information that, this was a parcel that was converted from GC to residential, and now more than a year has passed, and the owner is currently asking for it to be reverted back to general commercial. Janelle, you want to bring us up to date on where we are with this?
Thank you. So the record was left open at the la, at the time of the public hearing, that record was closed. A letter was submitted as part of the, the record from Mr. Quill, from the property owner. And that was the only comment we received. This is also associated with the second item on the agenda under unfinished business regarding the land use, so they'll be considered. They'll go to, together but separately.
Thank you. Any comments from the table or questions?
I've got two questions. So the, since this is reverting because of what our code says, why, why does the applicant have to request it be reverted? And then a second question is, what process, what measure do we have in place to alert people that there may be coming upon the anniversary of when their zoning will revert? Is there anything in our code that triggers?
So there's nothing really in the code, except for the language. It says if nothing happens within a year, it reverts. Sometimes in other sections of the code, like the subdivision, you have time extensions that can be granted. Typically, staff tries to keep an eye on when applications come through, especially for like subdivisions, as they, they do have expiration dates. We do try to keep an eye on those. But this is the first one that has come up since, since I've been on board. So, and we haven't had, I think, a change of zone, except for there was a city owned property that went to open space. So that automatically is going to be consistent in with the zoning.
I'll just note also, Councilperson Williams, that the state code requires that a public hearing and all this process occur for any change of zone. So even though the code says it reverts, we still need to go through this process in case something comes up during a public hearing. That would suggest we should, you as council people should do something different. So it's a state requirement to go through this process.
But if he had never requested that it revert, he could have potentially developed a residential plan and submitted that. And it would have been no trigger to have it revert automatically to general commercial?
Well, it's a good question. I mean, presumably we would have done some review if an application came in to, and would have noticed at that time. If we didn't catch it at the one year mark, we would have probably noticed it at that time, I would hope.
Along the same line, Glenn, what would happen if we voted not to rezone and the code requires us to rezone?
This is exactly the reason, Councilperson Morgan, that I don't like these sorts of provisions. You know, I see these reversion things and zoning and the zoning decision should be a decision based upon the best zoning for that property as it sits, considering the community and the characteristics of the neighborhood. So, you know, a decision to zone shouldn't be based upon some proposed use of the property. And sometimes that happens. And if that use doesn't occur within a year, then it reverts. I just don't like, I personally don't like the idea because you're put in a very difficult position. Then, you know, if you decide that it should be something other than reverting back after a year, we have to probably go through some additional process. I'm not sure exactly what that is.
Thank you. Tim, you had a question?
I'm gonna hold it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
But I do have another, Mayor. The, in the, in Mr. Quill's comment, there's a reference to a state process at the plus, I think plus process. Janelle, can you tell us what that was about?
So that actually isn't relevant to the change of zone. That's relevant to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which is H2. Because
Okay, then maybe you can address that when we get there. Thank you.
All right, any other questions regarding this particular item? Is there a motion? Yes, Rob.
The rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. The motion is second, all in favor?
Mayor, may I ask that because it's a
Okay, all right.
So please give your reasons why you think it should go to the new zoning, if that's the way you're voting. And you can rely upon each other's reasons if you hear some reasons that you also agree with.
Okay. Rob, you want to kick it off?
Sure, I vote to approve the rezoning because it's required by our code. And because also I think this site is very suitable for general commercial. And in fact, I would note that the applicant cited the 2018 minutes of the planning commission, where it referred to both uses, both zones being relevant and applicable.
Okay, thank you.
And I vote, I vote yes, because as Rob already stated, our stated our code that it reverts. And the applicant has stated a desire for it to revert to that code.
Bonnie?
I vote in favor for all the reasons given, as well as the fact that we haven't had any, as far as I know, we haven't had any comments from the public opposing the reversion.
Tim?
I vote because of my eloquent peers on the council have already stated all the reasons. Thank you very much. I have nothing to add.
Okay, I too will vote for the reasons that have been previously stated. But I do think this property is very well suited to become commercial property and add to the community, especially in that area. So I vote yes as well. So the motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. So then we can move on to item H2, its presentation of possible action on the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan and future land use map to the zoning map to change properties located at 203 Savannah Road, Sussex County Tax Map 335-4.20 -189.00 and 190.00 from residential to commercial use. Here again, Janelle, you want to comment on this? This is a formality of putting the map back to a commercial use, I believe. Is that right?
Yes, this is, as the state code requires that our zoning and our land use be consistent. Since you just reverted the zoning back to commercial, the land use needs to be amended from residential land use to commercial land use. And as Mr. Morgan asked earlier, that is the reason this went through the state plus process is because we have to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. Because our land use and our zoning need to match. And our land use said this was residential. So any change to the comprehensive plan goes back through the plus process. And they had no objection to this change from the residential back to the commercial. I would note in this afternoon's packet, we received a letter that did come in prior to noon supporting from the property owner, supporting the change from the residential to the commercial land use.
Thank you. And that was the only correspondence received, is that correct?
Correct.
Great, thank you. Great. So do we have a motion on this? I'd like a motion. Thank you, Andrew. Is there a second? Okay, thank you, Bonnie. Glenn, would you like a roll call on this as well? You're muted, Glenn, you're muted.
I'm muted too.
Yeah, I would suggest you just incorporate the reasons you stated in your last motion, in your last reasons. And if everybody would vote for that reason. I mean, you've already got a motion, I guess, so.
Yeah, we do.
So why don't we take a roll call? And everybody, if you'd say for the reasons previously stated in the last motion, I vote yes.
Who wants to kick it off? Rob?
I vote to approve based on the reasons I gave before.
Andrew?
I also vote to approve for the previously stated reasons.
Bonnie?
I just want to note for the record that both lawyers on this call were shut up by being muted. I want everyone to remember this better day. I vote in favor for the reasons given and because I think this is an appropriate use of this parcel.
Great, thanks. And Tim?
And I vote to approve as well for the reasons already stated.
And I will vote affirmatively as well, as was previously stated. So thank you all very much. I'll, I think we can move on with that. I would note, since we have 28 attendees at this meeting, once again, that we will only be considering the unfinished business this evening. And we will recess and reconvene on Thursday evening at 6:30. You can consider the new business items, with the exception being of item I8, which has to do with the cell phone tower. Other than that, all new business will be considered at our meeting on Thursday. So move then on to item H3, its presentation of possible action on a resolution to propose an amendment to the Lewis charter relating to fishing on public beaches in Lewis. Rob, you want to talk?
It won't take long, I hope. This was actually the result of an astute observation by Tim, who noticed that our code and our charter are in conflict. So this is to resolve that conflict and ask the General Assembly amend our charter to allow us to prohibit fishing in a certain area. In this, what we're looking at is the area of Lewis Beach. The, the language in the posted draft, I'm not sure what it says now, but it had said until this afternoon, any beaches under periodic lifeguard protection. I had suggested to Glenn, and I think he's agreeable to this, that we say instead, any public beaches northwest of the ferry terminal, so that we don't get into a conflict with the ferry terminal about whether fishing is allowed within 300 feet of them.
I did that. So, so what's posted now online is the version that was the subject of your public hearing. So instead of the guarded beaches, that language was changed to a long said Delaware Bay shore. So it includes the entire Bay shore. I think part of the reason that Councilperson Morgan is suggesting northwest of the ferry terminal is that, remember, there's a Jersey Delaware compact and we can't really regulate certain things dealing with the ferry. So I'm fine with that language that he's proposed. But, but, but it was the, you know, that was not the language that was at your public hearing. So there should be a discussion amongst all of you to be sure that that's the language you want to go with.
Can I ask one quick question about the language?
Sure.
This is, this is more a housekeeping matter, assuming that we voted in favor in this. And, and it passes, the charter amendment passes. Because the language says city council may restrict fishing, et cetera. I just wanted to kind of alert staff that will, I think, will then have to do something to define those restrictions. Because it doesn't say prevent, it says restrict. So it seems to me you're going to need some enabling legislation.
Well, that's actually already there.
Okay.
Already in the quote.
And I think that's what Mr. Morgan was saying, that Mr. Ritzert had picked up, that we have restrictions in our code. But we do not have the language in the charter to enable us to enact those restrictions.
Okay, so there's no problem then with having existing code language that that is, I don't know, brought into being through a charter change. You don't have to do anything to update the code language so that it's after the authorization? I'm sorry?
See what you're saying? I mean, this, this record hopefully makes clear that the, you know, the reason for this change. But again, you know, legislative intent is sometimes difficult to locate. But the legislative intent clearly is to do this charter change so that the existing language will become compliant with the charter. So.
Okay, as long as there's no timing issue, because it's kind of odd to have something you didn't have the authority to do preexist the authorization and then say that, you know, relate back and say, so that prior language is now okay.
That's true. I mean, you could do just a simple ratification of the existing language, maybe at a future meeting.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Actually, I'm not sure because the, Bonnie, you'll remember that until a few years ago, the existing language in the ordinance included the 300 feet latitude. We changed the ordinance because Dennis advises that people have been fishing within 300 feet of the shore for a long time. And that was really all we wanted to do was bring the ordinance into compliance with the charter. But on thinking about it, we realized that if somebody puts on waders and goes and casts his line within the bathing area, but not quite from the shore, or if a skiff comes in close and casts its hooks close into the bathing area, but within 300 feet from the shore, we would like to be able, if necessary, in the future to address that without going back to the legislature. So that's the reason why this language is really congruent with what our ordinance used to say, a little broader than what our ordinance now says.
Oh, that's fine. I don't have any problem with the substance. My question is strictly a, if you have an ordinance with an effective date before the charter change, do you have to do anything with the ordinance? Glenn can, Glenn can work that out.
It's a fair question. I think the first step is moving forward with the charter change, if you, if you want to do. So, so it would say, provided further, however, that the city council may restrict fishing northwest of the ferry terminal and for 300 feet from the mean higher high water line therefrom, where in the discretion of the city council, the public health and welfare is served by so doing.
I would move we adopt the resolution to ask the General Assembly to so amend our charter.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tim. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion carries. All right, moving then on to IH4, its presentation, possible action, a resolution, proposed amendment to the Lewis City Charter as it relates to vacancies of the mayor and city council. This was proposed and discussed in a public hearing. And Rob, you took the lead on this. Would you like to talk to us about that?
Sure, this should take even less time. In the charter, it refers sometimes to an action needing to be approved by a majority of the elected members of the city council. This will clarify that in the case of a vacancy occurring in the city council, a member appointed to fill that vacancy is deemed elected for purposes of those provisions requiring a majority.
Any discussion at the table? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'd move that we approve the resolution, asking the General Assembly to amend our charter accordingly.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Andrew, thank you. Tim, thank you again. Okay, so the motion is second, all in favor?
Bye. Bye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on then to item H5, H5 is presentation, possible action on ordinance to amend Chapter 40 of the municipal code of the city of Lewis regarding Parks and Rec Commission. This was a topic that we've talked about at our last meeting. This is a proposal to extend the membership or expand the membership of the Parks and Rec Commission from nine to 11 members. Amberi, do you want to talk about this?
Sure, so I guess one thing I would add is that what we had talked about previously was specifically the beach. So in the draft, I've drafted it to change it from nine to 11 because there's another park that does not have a commissioner and yet is a pretty large park. So this would give the opportunity to appoint a commissioner for the beach and also one for Great Marsh Park. So, and then we took out the early language that would have staggered, you know, staggered the terms on appointment to one year term, two year term, three year term. Because at this point, it's been established. We also noted that the, it says that one member shall be designated by the mayor as the chairman. That's the current ordinance. For many years, the, the chairperson has been the Parks and Marina Administrator. So that's an ex officio member, so it's not one of the appointed members. So just change the language to say the mayor shall appoint a chairperson for the commission. And then the other change is, and I apologize, I did not put a synopsis on this. The other change is adding beaches under the commission will have responsibility for parks, playgrounds, beaches, and then adding, including, listing out the parks and identifying the restricted area of Lewis Beach as defined in Chapter 63, Section 63-1. And that is where it identifies Beach One and Beach Two. And it's defined as the restricted area. What we had talked about last month as it related to the beaches was to have a commissioner assigned to Beach One and Beach Two, not to the entirety of the beach. So the best way to identify that is the same way we identify that area elsewhere in the code. So those are the changes.
Any discussion at the table? We do have, we do have a question or a comment in the chat.
I've got a question, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, Andrew.
So the point you're making about the chairperson, is the chairperson is, in this case, Janet, correct?
Yes.
So is that, she's an employee of the city. Does that mean the mayor has the option then to appoint someone outside of the Parks and Rec?
Um, I think, I think that if it were not going to be the staff person, it would be somebody from the commission. But if some, you know, the current language that's in there does not allow for the way that we've managed the commission for many years.
Okay, and it also says the members of the commission shall serve without compensation. So same question. If she's, if If she's, if a councilperson or, in this case, the Parks and Rec head is an employee of the city, aren't they compensated?
So she's not one of the nine or what would be eleven appointed members?
Okay, so then my last question is, we vetted, we had the Parks Commission vet the idea of the beach commissioner, but in this case, not the idea of a Great Marsh Park Commissioner. I like the idea, but is, should we also send this to the Parks Commission for their feedback?
So I think you definitely could. You, you can approve the ordinance without it, without assigning, without appointing somebody for that commission. I know Marty had said she would like to talk, so I don't know if you want to hear from Marty. But I mean, yes, you could definitely take it to the commission, but it is, Great Marsh Park has been established, we're supposed to be doing a master plan, and it seems to be getting to be an add-on to other commissioners.
And I would also, yeah.
I like the idea.
He would also note that the previous Parks and Rec Coordinator did chair a whole committee to look at the possible uses of the park and ran a public workshop. So I think it's been out there for some time that the Parks and Rec Commission is going to manage this. So it's more a matter of cleaning up the situation and recognizing the importance of this park. Yes, Rob?
On that point, Mayor, I thought that Rodney Robinson and Barry Duncan were heading up a subcommittee to do exactly that, to create a master plan for the Great Marsh Park. I wouldn't want to preempt what they're doing by appointing a different commissioner. Do you have, are you planning to appoint an eleventh commissioner at this point?
No, not immediately.
Okay.
I think that would be done in consultation. We can, taking it, you know, giving the commissioners the idea, the opportunity to talk further about it. Do we need to point it on, or Barry and Rodney, the ones capable, do they have enough time to really focus on it? So we can come back to that. I think we are looking to appoint a commissioner for the beaches.
Thank you.
I would also note that on the list, Emery, we have left out Swan and Dale Park.
I didn't mean to do that, so we'll.
We'll add Swan and Dale Park.
I bet.
Does that mean we add another commissioner or?
It just wasn't listed of all the parks.
Okay.
We already have one, towards Swan and Dale.
We do, exactly.
Yeah. I thought about it when I was writing it, I just must not have typed it. I was trying to get them in alphabetical order, so I must have gotten excited when I got near the end of the alphabet and didn't get to say.
I forgot it.
So.
Marty who wanted to.
Yeah, so Marty wants to say something.
Marty?
Hi, unmuting. I can start my video too. So I have just a couple of questions. First, I appreciate you taking on the issue of the chairman. That is bothering me for a while because the way we're doing it was not consistent with the code. I wonder if, though, the way it's explained to me is that Allison was not a voting member, and I guess neither is Chana.
That's right.
And I thought, well, that's how we get around what was written in the code. But would it, should we say something about that in this paragraph? About if the chairman is not an appointed member of the commission, there, I mean, it seems funny to have a chairman who's not a member of the commission, you know? It's just kind of an awkward, awkward way of saying it. But I think it would be helpful if it's explained that they're not a voting member, if they're a city employee and appointed as a city employee.
Well.
The president of the Senate is not a senator, and yet, right, so.
So I.
To me, it would be less confusing if it was stated that way, that they're not a voting member.
So Marty, what about if we were to say that the commission shall consist of eleven voting members appointed by the mayor and approved by city council and an ex officio member, you know, staff, you know, so I'm not going to.
Parks and Rec Coordinator will, shall be an ex officio member of the commission.
And chairman, I think.
Well, we would not want to make the Parks and Rec Coordinator the chairman necessarily. So I think that latitude that's in the current language is probably good in case we want to appoint a different chair. But Emery, to Andrew's earlier point, you'll now need to add also that the voting members shall serve without charge.
Oh, great, okay.
Sure, serve without compensation.
So here's a question, so that we're not, we, I don't vote, so that you all are not voting on language that you haven't seen, would you like me to make those changes and put it back on Thursday's agenda?
Sure, and there's one other change, Emery. And this is a fairly formal one. I would suggest that in line twenty-three, where the mayor shall appoint the chairperson, in order to be consistent with the way we appoint members and appoint members to fill vacancies that are safe with the approval of the city council.
Okay.
That, no.
So I'm adding Swan and Dale Park, I'm adding the ex officio, and then I'm adding the, with approval of council for the.
And then no compensation.
Oh, yes.
So I have.
All voting members of the commission shall serve without compensation.
Okay.
Bonnie, do you have something you wanted to add to?
I have something I want to add.
Go ahead.
So in B, where it lists the parks, my question was, including mean, including but not limited to. And here's, here's why. In the opening sentences, you talk about urban forests. However, portions of the urban forest are not in any parks. There's street trees and, you know, the trees around city hall. According to the tree chapter, chapter one seventy-seven, it's all the trees on public lands, basically. So.
So you're talking page two, line two, to add, to say, including but not limited to?
Well, the problem with that is if it means not limited to, you know, because I was thinking, what if we add another park? Do we have to go through city council to get jurisdiction over that? That would be one way. But if you say not limited to, that opens it up to governing, to handling more of the beach than just what's in this. So I'm not sure how you actually want to handle it, but.
How about if you?
One of the things. Sorry.
But if you put in there the street trees, you know, the.
Well, the street trees, the city hall trees, there's a few other things around that are not in parks. The street.
Well, if you said all, any ground associated with public.
Shrubs and plants on public property.
Yeah, on city property is basically what it is.
Marty, do you want to include, including those matters identified in, it's chapter one seventy-seven, right?
Um, we could add a nine, you know, urban forest.
The urban forest is basically located in parks, right?
Well, and street trees.
It's, according to chapter one seventy-seven, it's all the trees on public lands. Yeah.
So maybe.
Also, city hall, which is not a park and it's not street trees. There's things here and there that pop up that we find are public lands that we didn't know were public lands.
Right, so maybe if we do refer to one seventy-seven?
We could do that.
And list it out as a ninth, because I did kind of feel, when I was writing it, kind of felt like everything was listed out except for Marty's responsibilities.
Well, just the urban forest is described in chapter one seventy-seven.
Right, okay. Okay, so I'll.
How about if you just said other covered in one seventy-seven?
Okay, I'll work on that and I'll get it back out tomorrow.
I have one more thing that I would like to add. I really thank you for the Oxford comma. I'm serious.
You know what?
Thank you. Yes, I've had this battle with Bonnie, and this is one place where Bonnie's wrong and I'm right.
You know, I'll pass your thanks along to Sue Ann, because she picked that up when I asked her to proof it, because I never go back and look at that stuff when I'm amending an ordinance. If I write it, I use the Oxford comma.
Just for the record, I'm a huge fan of Oxford commas, Marty Thompson. That, you know, that kind of talk will get you, will get you daggers on.
Okay.
I agree with the Oxford comma.
I apologize. We have had this discussion before, but I apologize.
Thanks, guys.
All right, so we'll bring this item back on Thursday evening with Emery's revisions, okay? I think we then, we can move then on to item H six, which is presentation possible action on ordinance to enact a moratorium on the application of requirements of section one ninety-seven dash seventy-five of municipal code of the city of Lewis to properties located between the Lewis and Rehoboth Canal and the Delaware Bay for six months to allow provisions of this section to be amended. This is a topic that came up as a result of several discussions we've had about the recharge area and water source protection. And Emery, do you want to talk about this, or Janelle?
I can start, and then I can start and then kick it over to Janelle. First, I want to mention that the couple of changes that, that I have incorporated. You know what, I'm going to share my screen, so we're looking at the same thing.
These are changes from the draft that we have in our packet, is that correct?
Yes, well, I added it to the packet around five, so.
Today, yeah, okay, so this is new.
So where you start on page one, where you start on line twenty-eight, changed it to, whereas the aquifer replenished by the excellent recharge area does not appear to have direct, added the direct benefit on the city's drinking water supply as the wells are on the opposite side of the canal from the well field. However, recharge between the Lewis to Rehoboth Canal and the Delaware Bay does protect the aquifer, including protection from saltwater intrusion. And that was, I had talked to councilperson Morgan about that. And then the other thing I added was on line thirty-six for a period not to exceed six months, so that if, you know, you guys have something adopted in three months, it's, you know, you can, it's very clear that you can pull this back anytime. And then I think that was the only change, other than I put the date of the public hearing in it.
Right.
Where was the second change that you mentioned, Emery?
Um.
Line thirty-four.
Yeah.
Thirty-four, the one we.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that in the, in the section one of the ordinance, no, twenty-one, unless sooner lifted by the mayor and city council of the city of Lewis. So it's, we've got it two places now that you can lift it earlier.
Right.
So. So that's kind of an overview of the changes. Again, this is related to the source water zone, which has been on the books for twelve years, but has not been consistently applied, has very little been applied, if at all. And what we want to do is make a point to improve the language of the ordinance, maybe hopefully make it easier to comply with, meet the objectives, and less draconian, I think, is the goal. So Janelle, do you want to talk about where this is in the process?
So the Wetlands Buffer Subcommittee of the Planning Commission met on Friday. They started their work on looking at the ordinance. They seem to like the way the ordinance was drafted to kind of provide additional opportunities. They're meeting again next week, the sixteenth, at three P M. to further provide information. They had a bunch of questions that they've, they're providing to me, so I can go ask an expert. And I'm hopefully will be able to have that expert at the meeting as well, so we can address some of the questions that they had.
Thank you. Yes, Rob?
Janelle, how long do you think it'll take? What will the planning commission be able to address that ordinance at their next meeting?
They will not. I mean, they'll be given a, provided an update, because their next meeting is the seventeenth, and the subcommittee is meeting the day before. So hopefully we'll have some time to get some answers provided back to them, provide an update to the commission. They are aware that we are trying to, there's a, there's a moratorium that is being discussed. So there's a short turnaround to get this taken care of, and they are respectful of that. So I think they're going to be moving forward rather quickly.
So you've already given them draft ordinance incorporating best practices for an ordinance of this kind?
Yes.
Thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
Any comments from the table, any other comments from the table? Yes, Bonnie?
I just have a question about this new language in two, in case you're wondering, I'm looking at the language over here on my other computer, that's why I'm not looking at you guys. Ken, I thought one of the issues that is being hashed out here is whether the excellent recharge area protects the aquifer. I mean, I don't have any, I don't have any reason to believe it doesn't, but I thought that was one of the things we were looking into. So makes sense to say something, as opposed to making it so declarative, to say something along the lines of, however, city council believes that the recharge between the blah, 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 does protect the aquifer. That's my current understanding, but from listening to the last Friday, I, my sense was that's, that's not, that's one of the things that the subcommittee was looking into, to nail down.
I mean, I think it protects the aquifer, whether or not that's a direct benefit to the drinking water supply for this area is in question. I mean, I think that the, in discussion with Denrec, getting, getting water into the ground and replenishing the groundwater supply is protecting the aquifer.
Okay, if we, if we, if we have a scientific basis for making the statement, I have no problem with it. I just was under the impression it was something that was being looked into. So, you know, that's fine, I'll go with it if that's what Denrec says.
Bonnie, I have a question for you. Where were you looking in this or draft ordinance to possibly insert that clarification, that language?
It was in the language that, that Emery read that is a change.
Thing you haven't seen yet, because she showed it.
I can put it back up.
I'm looking, I'm looking at what's on, what's attached to the agenda right now, is that not the right line?
Yes, yes, it is.
It is, yeah, but it's not what we have in our, in our packets.
Right, I'm looking at it in real time, so.
So it's lines twenty-eight to thirty-two, it's that, that clause.
Right.
However, is where it starts.
Right.
If there's a scientific basis for saying it, I got no problems with it. I, that was just, and thanks for clarifying it.
So Janelle's been in the same conversations with me. I, I just want, Janelle, have you heard the same thing?
Yes, it was really more of a concern about that getting water back into the ground is the important aspect. And the secondary is, does it help the drinking water? But just getting it back into the, into the aquifer and back into the ground is very important. Sorry, I was trying to read the code because I thought it was already somewhere in there. Because I do know it does reference some of the aquifers and the other information in the existing. Because I, I do know, it, it does reference some of the aquifers and, and the, the other information in the existing codes.
But this moratorium doesn't really address that concern or that need, does it? As far as.
It addresses.
Getting water back into the aquifer.
It, it addresses the need to, to take some time to get the code right, to get the language right.
It acknowledges the need to get the code right, that's what this is, right?
Right, I mean, I think it's important that we don't just write off that area, and I think some of the discussion has, has kind of indicated that maybe it's not important to, to protect the area, and I, I think it, so that helps to balance it to say, while we don't know that it directly replenishes our supply because of, you know, what happens between there and our well, we still know that there's a benefit to the aquifer to, to get the recharge.
Yeah, and one of the intents in the code is the purpose of the source water protection overlay is to protect the public health and safety by minimizing contamination of aquifers and preserving and protecting existing items. So it does reference the fact that there is protection of the aquifer, so the water is going into there.
Right, Bonnie, are you suggesting, were you suggesting that instead of does, you substitute may protect? Like that kind of just not be so definitive?
Well, I, I am fine with the language as long as, as it is, as long as there's a scientific basis for it. As I said, my, my understanding was that this was one of the issues that was up for consideration, but if it's not, then I'm fine with where it is. I, I do have another question, though, which is this moratorium, the way it's written, it's, moratorium is hereby established on the application of the provisions. What, but, but the, the way the application of the provisions works is, is basically to, to building permits, right? So what exact, how, are we basically saying any building permit that comes in between now and whenever the moratorium is lifted is exempt, is that the way this is functionally going to work?
Functionally, yes.
I've got a couple of.
There. Hey, Rob.
Following up on Bonnie's question, Anne Marie, how many applicants for such building permits were people who want to be applicants, are you aware of?
So at this point, we have four permits that I'm aware of that have, have come in and are on hold pending this. There were five, but one of them is able to meet the 20% impervious cover requirement. I don't know if additional permits have, have come in in the last week since I got that information.
Is it, do, could some people be holding off on applying because of the, the, the excellent recharge ordinance we've got in place?
I doubt it, because, you know, again, I think for the most part, the, the requirements of the ordinance have not been understood by the, the people applying for permits, so.
Okay. I'd have a couple more questions. Just let me confirm, you've advised us that if we lift, that we enacted that ordinance to comply with the Delaware code, and that by lifting it, we would be out of compliance. I think that's accurate.
I, I think that's accurate. I think that approaching it through a moratorium rather than repealing the ordinance is your acknowledgement that you, that the city needs to comply with the state code, and you're trying to find a way to best comply with it. So I like a moratorium better than an outright repeal.
Okay, but, but it's better, but it still brings us out of compliance.
Correct.
What's the risk for being out of compliance, Glenn? What, what course, what exposure is the city assuming by being out of compliance? Our practices have been out of, of compliance, of compliance for 12 years, we know, or 12 or 14 years, whatever it is. But now that we have this awareness, what, you know, what is our risk?
Well, risk exposure is always something I'd rather discuss in an executive session, but I can render full, you know, competent advice, but I'll say there are other jurisdictions who are not in compliance, and they've not suffered any horribles from the state bringing in action, or, or anything along those lines. We haven't complied for several years, and we haven't. So, so I think that, that, if we're going to talk risk management, I think the risk is low, that there's going to be severe consequences to coming out of compliance for a period of time to come in it, to find a way to best come into compliance.
Okay, this question is probably, was directed to Janelle and Anne Marie. And I apologize, Rob, I think I jumped in on you. Real, real quickly, this draft ordinance, has this been reviewed by the state people to see if they're comfortable with it?
We've sent, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, we've sent the draft to Denrick, and we continue to work with them. We have not gotten comment back, because it was just professional courtesy to send it to them, to make them aware that we were doing this as well, as we were making that, working to move forward.
I, I think that once we have something that comes forth from the planning commission, we'll send it formally for review. We send it again as a courtesy, knowing that there could be changes that come after the planning commissions reviewed it, and we didn't want to, you know, request a formal review repeatedly, so. Where it stands.
Anne Marie, the last meeting when we discussed this, I, I asked if Hanlo openaters had been consulted, because their wells are on the same side of the canal as our. Have you had a chance to do that?
I have talked to the, the mayor and the town manager, and, and they did not express any concerns.
The, let me tell you what my concern is. The only, the only prior experience I've had with a moratorium on the council, and it's been seven years, and I've been following it a little longer than that, is the moratorium that we put in place on the special exception in the marine commercial zoning. And the reason we put that moratorium in place was because the special exception allowed a small flood of development we didn't want. And so the moratorium was to pause that development until we could reconsider the zoning, and we have ended up revoking the special exception. This moratorium, it seems to me, would have exactly the opposite purpose and effect. It would say that we see a flood of development that we may not like, so we're going to lift our ordinance so that flood can occur. The, it would be, a moratorium in this case would be bizarre in saying that our ordinance is imperfect. So we're going to amend it, we're going to amend it to implement best practices, as Janelle has already done, just submitted to the planning commission. And those best practices will allow people who want to develop to do things like install rain guards, install pervious surfaces to mitigate, so that they can still get the same kind of coverage, but they'll mitigate the effect of impeding groundwater recharge with other measures. And this ordinance is very, it's, it's imminent, the amended ordinance, the planning commission subcommittee has it. It's not going to take long to get it in place. For some reason, we're thinking, but we're going to give the people who are in the queue to develop their properties without concern for the groundwater recharge, we're going to give them a perhaps two-month free pass to get a flood of applications in. They won't be governed by the current ordinance, and they won't be governed by the new and improved ordinance. It seems to me not much to ask, those people who are applying to wait two months for our new and improved ordinance to be put into place, and then to apply with due respect for the state and for our groundwater and our, the aquifer of our neighbors. So I just don't understand why we're doing, why we're considering such an ordinance, and I, I can't see how I could support it.
Can I address the timing? So i- if this does, if the ordinance that's pending at the planning commission now is released from the subcommittee next week, or in the next, you know, three weeks, and it goes to the planning commission, the full planning commission at their March meeting, that's the soonest it could do that.
Was it our April meeting, that would be the soonest?
If the planning commission sends it on at that March meeting, then April, you would schedule a public hearing that would happen somewhere between April and, and the May meeting, and then, so the soonest possible time it could be approved would be the May meeting.
So we're talking four months?
Right.
Four months, three months, three, March, April, May, three months, rather than two.
Right.
We could, if we wanted, schedule a special meeting to consider it. We could ask the planning commission to please make this a priority. So there are ways we could try to, to make sure it happens in three months, maybe faster. So what I think you've told me is that it, it may not be two months, it may be three months, that we're asking the applicants to wait if they don't want to redesign their, their plans, so that we can comply with the state and comply with good practice. I don't think that's too much to ask. So I would propose that we not approve this.
Glenn, can I ask a question, could a pending ordinance doctrine apply here?
It really works in the reverse, so the pending ordinance doctrine doesn't really fit well with this sort of an ordinance, as councilperson Morgan says, this is kind of the reverse, where typically, right, typically you're trying to put a halt on something that you've have currently in your code, here you're opening a window. So it doesn't really work in this context.
What? Anne Marie, in your, in the, when a, how long does it typically take a plan? I'm not talking about a subdivision plan, but a homeowner who comes into your, the office with a plan for construction, for building a home, putting in additional, how long does that typically take to review and grant a permit?
I would say anywhere from, depending on how extensive it is, anywhere from a week to two or three weeks.
Okay, and is, and that is, there's, is there any representation at the time that an applicant comes in with a request that it will be turned around within a certain period of time?
Um, not necessarily, I do believe Robin's on here, so it might be better to, to see if we can bring Robin in to answer that. I think he's here, there he is, okay, so, Robin, I'm bringing you to the panel, you can mute, unmute yourself, you can turn on your video if you'd like. There you are.
Normally, councilman, normally, it takes just, again, it's the size of the project, but normally a house, there's other factors in this area, too, because it deals with the flood plain. So we're, we're reviewing for, you know, you know, flood plain compliance. If all the documents are, are in place when we get the application, it usually takes a week, maybe a little over a week, to, to, to run through the review process.
And that's once all, all the documents are in from the, from the applicant, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Right, how often do your applicants not have a full folder at the time they come in, and, you know, make their first inquiry with your office?
Most of them that submit applications have, have submitted applications before. A lot of the contractors are familiar with the process. We very rarely get someone new, we do.
I see.
The, the big things that we're using miss, or they're missed, or something more on the flood plane-related side, an elevation certificate, or for remodels, if they do not have a current information on assessment values of the home.
I see, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Robin. Any question, other questions from the table? Yes, Bonnie?
I, I guess I have more for the comment, I just think, been thinking about what Rob was just saying, and I, I guess my understanding is that the, here, here's the conundrum I see, that these four folks who Anne Marie identified, they're, by definition, they're already waiting. So we're asking them to wait some more, and will it be three months, will it be four months? I don't know. You know, by the time you schedule a public hearing and all that, you could be asking them to wait quite a while, but the, but the real conundrum I see is, to Rob's point, you're, it, it doesn't make any sense to ask these people, even if they could, to try to redesign to the current, the current ordinance, because it's an ordinance we already know we're very, very likely to change. So asking people to, to, to change their plans, to comply with something that we ourselves are not really endorsing, I, I had, I'm, I'm concerned about. I'm, I'm also, so, so you've got people in, in sort of linear time buckets, right, you've got the people who are already waiting and have been waiting, and then you've got people who might come in between now and whenever we, we have this ordinance moving forward. And I guess, with respect to the four people who are already waiting, and have been waiting, I'm, I'm inclined to say that, that they should, they should be allowed to proceed. I don't know that it's, it's fair to have them be open-ended, waiting on an open-ended way. But on the other hand, with the moratorium, the, the one thing you don't want to have is everybody who has ever given any thought to seeking a permit, coming in and saying, let's do this now, when we don't have to comply with the existing ordinance, and we don't have to comply with whatever city comes up with. So I think we have an issue about guarding against that. So, but I, I do have a fair amount of empathy and sympathy for the folks who are caught in the fact that, let's face it, we had an ordinance on the books for a very, very long time. We've allowed 40-odd permits, since we became aware of the problem, we've allowed, I think it's 40-odd permits to be issued without complying with the ordinance. Now we've got these four people who are sort of caught in this interregnum between when we realize we've got to do something about it, and when we do something about it. So if we do come up with a moratorium, I would hope that we could come up with some kind of way of, of giving relief to the people who are caught in that, in that, the, the four or so who are caught in the situation we're looking at now.
Bonnie, how do you, can, can you think of any ways that that relief could be provided?
Well, if you, if we pass the moratorium, the people, the people I'm identified are, by definition, right, their, their situation is dealt with. The problem then becomes whether we have a rush, you know, to, to do it, so. I don't know, maybe, maybe put the moratorium in place for people who are already in process, and then put a hold on any permits that come in after a month, something like that, I don't know. Glenn, do you have any ideas on how you can fashion an equitable approach while keeping an, an undesirable aspect of, of the moratorium from occurring?
Well, I mean, just as you suggested, is, is the only thing I know, is to somehow say they're in the pipe, so these, these existing applications can proceed as we've been applying the ordinance, which is a non-appliance of the ordinance. And then any new applications would have to either comply with the ordinance as currently written on the books, or. Or we wouldn't accept the applications until. The, the moratorium is lifted and the ordinance is presumably changed.
Robin, yeah, can I ask Robin a question? Robin, in, in, you know, in this time of year, right? In the, the February, March, April. Do you have a sense of, on average, and I know it's a guess. How many permits, building permits were likely to see in the area encompassed by the excellent recharge area?
When speaking with Henry just recently, when this all came about. I think he said he'd had five, four or five phone calls from people looking to do permits. That would be in this area. So just using that and just maybe a few others, it, it could be eight to ten.
Okay, but those are people who have not actually submitted permits yet, right? They're not.
Yes, that's correct.
So we've got people who have, who have sought permits and are on hold. People have expressed a level of interest. You know, I, I just, I, I just feel badly for the ones who are caught in the middle here.
So one, one question, would it? Would shortening the time from six months to something like two or three months?
No, Emery, that would have exactly the same effect.
I guess I'm, I'm thinking it takes, in, in order to get. House plans together and, and to get plans together, that's not happening in, inside of a month to, to.
We'll get a rush. We'll get a rush.
We don't know what's already in works. Couple days from now, so.
Bonnie makes a, a good point. It is, it is a little hard on the people. The, the four people who are in the queue. Bear in mind that there were five. And that one of them complied with our current. Ordinance and so. It's not impossible to do. It's not as though we're setting up an impossible hurdle. But we want to give relief to those four. But it'll take us three months to do it right. And I don't think that's a great deal to ask.
Depends, you know, I don't know whether it does or not, Rob. I, I do like the idea of trying to find a way to. You know, go forward with those four. And the other question is, did they, did they modify the plan in order to come in compliance with the one that is on, that's. Was it just already there?
It was already there.
So they didn't have to modify their plan. So to your point, Rob, that, that plan already.
No, it's, it's not any change to my point, Ted. It's not an, at all an impossible ordinance to me. One can design to be environmentally sensitive is the lesson of that application.
Well, but we had, we had testimony from. Mr. Quill and his attorney and engineer that it's, there's not, a not insubstantial cost. You're trying to figure out how to comply with this. I mean, it's, it's for permits. Right? For permits. Four permits are not going to make an enormous difference in. The, in, in the recharge in this area. So.
Do we know if they're residential permits or commercial?
They're all residential.
They're all residential.
Only one, it's only one of the four is a new home. The others are.
Renovations.
One's an addition, I think. One, one's a pool house and then one was hardscape, right?
I, I can't remember off the top of my head. I'm, I'm not in my office, so I can't.
Have, have any come in since you provided that listing?
I'd have to check tomorrow. I'm not sure off the top of my head, Emery.
I think the other thing to consider here is the, yeah, of course, the applicants, but th- these are jobs that are going to be completed by local. Businessmen and tradespeople.
Chances are they are, you're right, Andrew. Chances are they already are very close to signing a contract or. Working with a contractor. I mean, did these people, who's brought those permits in? Did the contractor bring them in? Or did the individual homeowner bring them?
Normally in this type of situation, usually it's the contractor.
That's what I thought. So they've already signed a contract with the, with, with the contract. They, the, their owner has already signed.
I know that we often like to vilify developers and such, but in, in a lot of cases, these types of projects are. Individual contractors and they're using local workers.
Andrew, we, we may have Preston Shell on the line. I hasten to say we do not vilify developers. We, we love developers.
I didn't mean counsel particularly.
Developers are our friends.
How about, how about if we allowed any permits that have been received? As of the end of this week, right? So if you've got some, the four and you've got people who are on the verge of, of coming in. Then those are allowed to go forward. And then, you know, they're, they're given a pass basically. I don't know how you. Draft that language, but and, and then we shut, and then as Rob has suggested, we shut the door.
Bonnie, I, I, I'm coming around because of what you and Andrew say, but I, I wouldn't. Think it's a good idea to say until tomorrow, until the next day. Because if I'm, if I've been thinking about this, I go in tomorrow to the city hall. It may be a bad application. It may be defective and maybe all kinds of sloppy stuff.
Then I'll, then I'll go back to my, to my core equitable concern about the people who are stuck, those four.
I have a. We, we may, we may be there.
I have a question possibly for Glenn, maybe, well, for someone. And the question is, is there any requirement that, is there a notice requirement? For this type of action from a council, from this kind of body? In other words, do you have to give seven days notice, fourteen days notice to comply with a, a change like this?
Well, you've already given notice of the ordinance and conducted a public hearing, so that, that notice portion is, has been. Has happened already. So you could adopt this site in its present form. Your. Conversation right now is about loosening this up a little bit to allow for some pending applications to proceed, four of them. So that does not trigger a new public hearing or notice period. So that the notice that's required has already occurred.
Well then, the time for a motion, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we. Apply the proposed moratorium only to currently pending. Applications in period.
As of this date.
Can I, can I make a, offer a friend, a, a second? Can I offer a friendly amendment? Which is to give some direction to staff about what to do with the, any, the other permits, which I presume is going to be to hold them pending. Pending council action on redrafting this ordinance. Does that make sense?
So for the moratorium ordinance, just so, so I'm clear in terms of drafting it for the secretary's signature. We would make it. It wouldn't be forward looking. It would be a moratorium on anything that was submitted. Prior to February eighth, two thousand twenty-one for meeting.
February ninth. Cause you, you have to include the eighth in.
Well, I'm thinking anything, oh, I see what you're saying. Before, right, before February ninth. Would not have to meet that anything. So anything that comes in February ninth or later. Okay, so I, okay, so.
If, if I'm, can I submit an application right now?
No, city hall's closed.
Do, do you want to say four, four thirty PM on February eighth or four o'clock PM, February eighth?
You got plans, you got plans together, Rob?
Rob's working on his plans now.
And draft it on the fly.
And so that, with this suggestion, what we're considering then is that. The net result would be anyone who comes in tomorrow or a week from now and so forth would be advised that. There will be no review of their, of their plans, no permit issued. Is that correct? For the next ninety day period?
We, we would review plans because if it, i- if they submit something and it meets the requirements. If, if it's under twenty percent of, of impervious cover, then, then we can issue it.
That, that's true. I apologize for not being, speaking more clearly. That's correct. But if it does exceed the twenty percent and it, the property is in the excellent recharge area, then those. Applicants, applications would be put aside and held. And put in queue until this, a moratorium expires.
Not the moratorium until, until we've revised the regulation.
I'm sorry, oh, yes.
And we'll, we won't just hold them. We will make contact with the applicants to let them know.
Oh, of course.
And you'll also have discussion, Robin and Henry can have discussion with them and say why they don't meet the current ordinance, if they want to. You know, if they want to proceed and make modifications so they could come into compliance of the current ordinance, then they could proceed, correct?
Since you put these restrictions on, does it need to be the six months then or three months is sufficient now?
There wouldn't be, this wouldn't be the more, this wouldn't be the ordinance. All we're doing is giving a, all we're doing is giving a pass to the. All we're doing is giving a pass to those four.
The current moratorium does give a date of July fifteenth for the ordinance to expire. So, so I, I would say probably leave it as is and hope to work quickly and get it done so that you're not in a position of having to extend it after. Three months and if something doesn't go exactly the way you hope it does.
So Glenn, you're suggesting that we keep July fifteenth in the, in the moratorium, correct?
Correct.
What happens between now and the fifteenth of July?
You're holding applications.
You're holding applications. I don't think this ordinance, I don't think this moratorium really applies anymore.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm thinking it applies only before today.
You're right.
It doesn't, we're saying we're actually going to apply our ordinance as of tomorrow.
Yes, that's basically what we're doing. We're saying as of tomorrow, the ordinance is on the books, is in effect.
As of four thirty today.
So that we're not, yeah. So we're not holding anything. We're just.
What's in the queue gets approved. What's, what, what, anything that didn't, isn't here already is, is sitting until we get the new revised.
Unless it, it as. With the, with what's not on the books and haven't, and haven't enforced for all these years.
So you don't need, you don't.
This is the first, and I think where your, where staff was headed. That's right.
So we've killed the moratorium?
But we have to write, we have to address the issue of. Taking care of the poor.
Right. Yep.
I mean, should we put some kind of notice on the website? And I, I also suggest, you know, some, a, a, a meeting with Anne Marie and Henry and Robin. So everybody's on the same page tomorrow. But some kind of notice, you know. So, so that people, I, I mean, wherever people look, so that when they're getting ready to submit a permit, so that they have some. Awareness before they go forward. I mean, I, I, since we are now doing something we have not been doing for years and years and years and years. I'm trying to figure out how to get that. Information out to people.
Well. I'm not sure you want to, I'm not sure how you want to do that. I think it, it has to be handled on a, on an individual basis by people who come in. You know. It's a, but the ordinance is on the books already, so all we're doing is correcting the fact that we're implementing.
Right, well, the ordinance is on the books, but even we didn't appear to know that it was on the books. So I'm, I have sympathy for people out in public who don't know about it either.
So Chris, Christine Beschi has her hand up, but at this point, we've had a public hearing on this, Glenn. Are we able to take any comments?
I, I don't think you should. The record's closed.
Yeah, I think we're, the record's closed on. Okay, so here, you know, the, we don't need to adopt this moratorium at all. What we need to do is just take care of. Directing Anne Marie and, and Robin that effective tomorrow morning. Or as of last, as of tonight at four thirty, the ordinance is on our books is in effect.
Bonnie, would it, would it? Help with your thinking if we were to move that we waive the requirements of our ordinance as to currently pending applications?
I, I'm going to kick that one over to Glenn.
Don't have a waiver provision within the zoning code?
Yeah, right.
We, we've had a, we've had a policy, an informal policy of non. Enforcement. Since it was discovered that this ordinance was on the books, right? And so I think we're just sort of discontinuing an informal policy. Seems to me.
I knew, was never aware of the policy until this came up. So it came to council. It was an informal staff policy.
I, I don't know. I, I have a vague recollection that council was told about it at one point, but I, I.
I think that's possible. But anyway, all right, there's really, there is really any action we need to take at this point? Glenn, I don't think so.
No. No.
I don't think there's any action, you know.
Okay, so Emery will get in touch with those four.
Unless, unless Emery and Robin feel they need, you know, some. Saying you're directed to implement the ordinance as it's, as it's stated. And with that, Robin, Emery, with that.
I, I don't think, I guess typically I would need the direction otherwise to not implement it. So, so. I, I mean, I think there's enough record here to issue the permits.
I think so.
That's the pending applications, right?
Right. Andrew, looks like he has a comment he wants to make.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I guess it's still around the notice. I mean, would the folks just have minor renovations and things that they're doing throughout Lewis Beach? I mean. So the next three months, just they'll be told you have to wait for six months.
God, if it complies with the, not if it complies with the coverage.
Any interior renovations would not be affected. The, the only things affected by this are where you're expanding. The amount of impervious coverage.
Andrew, would you be more comfortable if we had a square footage carve out?
I, I think it's kind of a, to, to, to sort of meander through that language tonight. I don't know. It's a fair process, you know?
Right. I'm not sure how you do that. And the lot sizes could vary. So, you know, you could say a square footage and then you have a lot coverage, which is different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just bothered by the inequity. You know, there've obviously been multiple homes over there built and that should have been. Subject to this and it's. And, you know, here we are with, so.
Yep. And it really, this ERA, the excellent recharge area really applies. I'll describe it roughly as half of the beach area between Savannah and the Roosevelt inlet. It doesn't extend all the way to Roosevelt inlet.
Right.
Yeah.
It goes to about Kentucky.
It's that far up? Okay. I couldn't remember. I was thinking it was Vermont. Okay, good.
So we're okay here, Emery and Robin, are you okay with this direction at this point?
If Glenn says we're okay, then we're okay.
You're okay to implement the ordinance. It's been on, it's been on the books. I mean, obviously, somebody can. Make claims as to what our prior practice was, but it is an ordinance that's on the book that was properly noticed, wasn't challenged when it was. Adopted, so it is a, it's a viable ordinance.
Okay.
All right.
All right, good.
So then let's move on to item. Thank you. It's a good discussion. Item H seven, which is presentation and discussion of preparation of ordinances to adopt the two thousand eighteen building codes adopted. Developed by the International Code Council. We talked about this the other evening and. We are currently functioning with the two thousand twelve ICC codes, the two thousand eighteen have been out. And so that would bring us, and those, these codes are issued every three years. So we're. Essentially two cycles behind and the two thousand twenty-one codes are due out fairly soon, I gather. But the question is, do we go ahead with the? But the question is, do we go ahead with the moving, adopting of the, and having, providing direction to Robin to prepare. The ordinances would be required to adopt the two thousand eighteen code.
Mayor, with apologies, I, I think there was a motion on the last item, so we probably see the records clear.
Okay.
You did, Rob.
I thought Bonnie did.
And Bonnie seconded it.
Date the motion?
Uh, yeah, I certainly agree with withdrawing it.
Okay, I withdraw, thank you, Glenn.
So you're both withdrawing your motion, right? Thank you, okay, so let's go ahead with this one then, Rob. Robin. Talk to us about the eighteen versus the twenty-one.
Uh, well, as, as was at the workshop, the, like, the, I think, just we started out with the eighteen, there was a brief conversation about. That I heard the potential maybe moving to the twenty-one. Um, I spoke with another gentleman from the ICC today. Briefly talking about the twenty-one. The, the twenty-one has been approved. The problem with the twenty-one right now is the IRC is, has been held up due to an appeal. Uh, through the process, it's, it's not the code itself, it's, it's just how it was adopted. Uh, some of the organizations have a right to appeal, so they appealed it. The decision has been made that, that it was done properly, reviewed properly, and voted on properly. And it only pertained to the residential code, so all the other codes are. Accessible except for the IRC code, the residential code, which will be probably out. The end of the month, the gentleman said, maybe the beginning of March. Again, as I brought up the other night at the workshop. The, the somewhat of a concern is right now, there is no training available for the twenty-one codes. There is no documentation noting the significant changes between the eighteen and the twenty-one code. There's also no certifications for the twenty-one code because it's so new. So that, that, it's not that you can't do it. He also said it's just throughout, there are some communities throughout the United States that have went to the twenty-one, or going to the twenty-one. He said, but overall, from what he's seen, the majority, they stop at the eighteen, the two thousand eighteen.
How long would it, um, how long do you expect it'll be before the twenty-one code? Is available for training and certification?
I'd have to follow up with the ICC to, to, to verify, and I think it's, some of it was held up because of the appeal. So it, it might be soon, but I don't know rate, rate us up to that.
Because I think the question we're struggling with is. We don't want to delay modernizing our code, but we don't want to miss an opportunity to modernize it further.
Correct.
Would it? Would it be as expensive again to train you on the twenty-one code as it will be to train you on the eighteen code?
Well, it's, it's probably not as much as the cost of training, it's just the, the gap in between the, the significant changes. In the year process, you know, I would, again, as I said, on Thursday night. The, the three-year cycles, the significant changes, books come out from twelve to fifteen, fifteen to eighteen. So I'm going all the way to the twenty-one, I would have to kind of research the three books. To kind of get a synopsis of what has changed. Also, another thing, and again, it's relatively minor. But the state do mandates, the plumbing code and electric code are only on the two thousand eighteen. So it would kind of keep us in line with what the state's doing as far as year-wise.
How long ago did the state adopt the twenty-eighteen code, Robin?
The, the energy code just recently, I think the plumbing code was probably. Five months ago, something like that. But the energy codes was just recently, I think it was in December, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, Robin.
It sounds. Go, go ahead, Rob.
After you.
Real quick question, Ra- uh, Robin. You know, when you get the, in order for you, for us to go from the twenty-twelve to the twenty-eighteen. Are you expected to, is it your job then to actually get the twenty-fifteen code? And also get the twenty-eighteen code and read the books and is. Understand what the differences are, the changes are, is that your, is that what you're expected to do, or does the ICC not? Prepare synopses, uh, you know, distill it, distill the changes.
Yeah, but, but I, what I showed the other night at the workshop was the little manual, and that is what ICC comes out with. They give you a synopsis, and it's basically, it says the significant changes from the two thousand and fifteen to the two thousand eighteen code. So they break it down for you.
Right.
But, but there's, that book that I showed was only for the residential, there's one for the building code. There's one for the ener- um, energy codes, there's one for all the codes, of course, some of them are smaller than others. But I would have to do that through. The two thousand twelve to fifteen cycle. The fifteen to the eighteen cycle, and if we move forward to the twenty-one to eighteen, so it'd have to be three books that would have to be. Research through, but they, ICC does supply those books. Normally, normally have a class, I went to a class, significant changes to the IRC. From fifteen eighteen, so that's where I got that book from, so we didn't have to purchase that, other than going to the class and paying for the class.
Right.
So they do supply it. I don't have to take the full book. And look, but if you do look at the books, they are noted in each column, there is a. Black line that they put in to show there is some change that has been done.
Right. Yeah, so really, what, I think what you've just described is that you are going to be reading the, the synopsis. For the, that shows the changes from twelve to fifteen, and then you'll be reading another book for the fifteen to the eighteen, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Um, do you think it's burden, burdensome to add another book to your reading pile?
Yeah, yes, because it's, it's, again, it's not just one, it's, it's the building code and the residential code, and there's several, so. We'd have to go through. For the building code, you would need three books, for the residential code, you would need three books.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah. It, it, it would add a little bit more, yes, it would.
Ra- Robin, before I joined council, I didn't have, I didn't need these.
Yeah, I've got my little readers.
Some of us wear them in our, in our eyes, so anyway.
Well, yeah, you know, uh. I, I'll just throw this out there, uh, I, I, I like the idea that. Louis would be current. I like the idea that we would have, uh, we would be working from our building stock. We know it's, uh, we have a healthy economy right now, lots of new construction, and it's, it appeals to me that we are. Looking to the future more than to the past by embracing as current a code as possible. Uh, so that's, that's my comment. It can be shaped.
I think the fact that, I think the fact that Robin's indicated that the, uh, energy code was just adopted in December. From two thousand eighteen by the state, is that correct still?
Yes.
And the plumbing code was just adopted relatively recently from eighteen. Suggests that that is the current, the most current status that most of the state is functioning on. If not all, is that correct, Robin?
Yes, and, and again, there, there's a few that are, that are up to eighteen, Sussex County's looking at to go to the eighteen.
They're currently on twelve, right?
Correct.
So they're doing.
And Robin, when the state, when the state went to eighteen for, I think you said the plumbing, uh, code, or whatever the code, the, yeah. They went from what, what year to eighteen?
I think it was the twelfth.
Actually, they adopted the fifteen.
They did for plumbing?
Plumbing, yeah, they, they seem to do every three years.
I don't think, the energy code, I don't think, though.
Maybe not, I, I just remember it being, I, I remember the plumbing code. For some reason, when.
So Anne Marie, are you saying, Anne Marie, are you saying that the most recent adoption from the state for plumbing was two thousand fifteen? They've just now come to two thousand fifteen?
No, they're in two thousand eighteen now, but they did adopt the two thousand fifteen before that, I'm pretty sure. Because I remember when that happened.
Thank you.
What Robin's saying is the, the other codes were, that the state were using were from twelve, and they went from twelve to eighteen.
Thank you.
Yeah. You have a question or comment?
I just have a practical question for Robin. Robin, what? To these codes, the twenty-eighteen or the twenty-twenty-one, which seems to be what we're talking about. Which code would you feel most comfortable having us adopt? You and, and obviously the, the people with, with whom you work, who are trying to, you know. Apply with the code, what's the most practical way forward here and? From your point of view?
For practical purposes, from our end, it, it's, I don't know if it's whether it's the eighteen or twenty-one. It's just trying to be consistent with everybody else. It's, it's harder, again, I hear a lot of the builders speak, that it's, it's hard for them in general. It would be nice if the state would mandate a building code, just like they do the plumbing and the energy code, that way, everybody's on the same. Page per se. It's, it's hard enough for a lot of these builders to. Even go to the county, I mean, they, they can be on one side of the street in the city of, uh, Lewis. Working off one code and in the county, working off another code.
Yep.
Just on the other side of the street, then. There's a few modifications that the county puts in that we don't, we, we basically have been more in line with just whatever the code says, that's what we. Uh, adopt.
Right.
Which is good, it just makes it easy. The county does do a little bit of changes, now you've added the changes plus a different year involved in. It just makes it more difficult, um, from, from that standpoint. As far as from our standpoint, I, I, you know, the code in general is the code, yes, the new modifications are new technique, new materials that are used, so. It's, it's just learning what, what's in that code, the training.
So if, if the, the state is on twenty-eighteen, and the county is either on it or looking to go on to twenty-eighteen. Is it easier? I mean, we might lose some of the latest and greatest in the twenty-twenty-one code, but is, is it? From a practical standpoint, if everybody is basically at the twenty-eighteen stage, is that the best way to go?
I lost a little bit of your body, but yes, I think it's, for practical, I think it's trying to stay consistent. With the other state codes, plus with what the other municipalities somewhat around us are doing. So I, in, in general terms, yes, I, I would say probably the eighteen is probably the best way to go.
And when, when the materials are available for the twenty-twenty-one, the, the training, certifications. The book that shows the, the changes from twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-one, there's nothing that would stop us from adopting twenty-twenty-one then, right?
Yes, we can move, we can move forwards and, and whatever year or two years if.
And, and is, does this require, uh, always counsel? Do we always, is this always a council level, uh, decision, or can this be done administratively?
There, there are very, very few jurisdictions that say that the, they are adopting the International Code Council's building code. And that is the, if the ICC updates, then their code says we automatically update also. I would say don't ever do that because you have no idea what's going to go into those codes, so that's the only way you get away from it coming back to council. But I, I don't think it's a good idea to go that direction. I think. Any adoption should be subject to council approval.
And also that provides us the opportunity to exempt certain provisions if we wish, which is what's on of the.
So are you suggesting that, or are, should we now expect, once Robin has done his. You know, his coursework, read the synopses, that he'll be coming back to us and making. Recommendations to us, or briefing us on, on the changes, is that correct? That is what we can expect? Okay.
The significant changes, I mean, he, he won't go through in detail as to every single, you know. Minute thing that was changed, but you know, for example, I'm sure you talked about at the workshop, that the twenty, was it twenty-fifteen, Robin, that implemented the residential sprinklers?
Well, I, yeah, actually, I think, uh, when I was talking to the gentleman from IC, I think he said the twelve, it, it was in the code. In two thousand nine, but it was just an addendum, it wasn't in the code language itself, it was just an addendum. So I think he said in the twelve, it actually came, actually was put as part of the code, as a requirement.
Right, we exempted that, asked at the county.
Right.
That provision, we did not, neither the county nor Louis adopted that.
I have one more question for you, Robin.
Yes.
During that, uh, workshop the other day, what did we learn about what Rehoboth, uh, what code are they on, please?
They're on, they are on, um. They adopted it in December of twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, yes, correct.
So they've been in it over a year, okay?
Hey, hey Glenn, did, did they, did they exempt the sprinklers?
They did.
Okay.
Well.
Part of the reason I, I'll offer also that, that sometimes jurisdictions wait and don't adopt the codes as soon as it comes out. There are sometimes some hidden unintentionals that get into the code, and until you see them in play for a year and a half or two years. You don't really know what might be hidden in the code, so it's almost like some of the jurisdictions wait till all the kinks get worked out, then they adopt it.
Right.
But do they get it worked out at the ICC level, or did they get worked out by the locals, local governments, uh, opting out of certain aspects of the code?
Both, both, some of, some of them are ICC changes, and then some are just the local jurisdictions opting out.
And, and the other thing is the, the, um, commentary, because the, the longer the code's in place, they, they have the commentary so that. A lot of the, the things that. Don't make sense can be resolved through their commentary.
Mayor, has there ever been in the past a discussion of just making a policy around how often the code gets up, updated?
There has not been. That I'm aware of.
Do you see that there's something in the chat?
Uh, there've been a couple things. Rick Moore, training for the twenty-one codes will be conducted on March one through five, according to their website. They're under review for edits, which will be covered in, on February eighteenth. Okay. He gives a website where that can be found. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
We need to make a decision on this tonight, or can we get more input from the builders?
I think Robin's looking for some direction here. Uh, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I think, uh, the sooner we get started on it, the sooner we can make some. I think we've had some information here that's useful about what's going on at the state level, what's going, what the county's anticipating, what Rehoboth is doing at this point.
I think if the, um, if, if it looks like you're going to move to two thousand eighteen, we can start ordering. The codebooks themselves, if, if we're not sure, then we'll hold off.
Sounds like even if we went to the twenty-twenty-one, that Robin would have to read the twenty-eighteens anyway, that's what he said.
Well, not the full books, the big, the major differences books.
Can we get him the, the Cliff Notes for, for now?
Oh, evidently they're not out yet.
Yeah.
The twenty-twenty-one.
The, the, yeah, significant changes from the eighteen to the twenty-one.
Okay. Synopsis.
Correct.
Right, they're not out yet.
The Cliff Notes.
Right. Right.
I, I, I'd make a motion that, that we adopt the twenty-eighteen. ICC building code, um, and the reason I'm saying that is because I think we need to, to give some guidance to the building officials' office, and. This seems to be the, the code that is most prevalent at the state, county, and local level, and in the private. The people who actually are, are building things to comply to our code. But ask that Robin let us know, uh, when he's comfortable recommending that we go to the twenty-twenty-one code.
Thank you, Bonnie. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
This is just direction to proceed toward the, toward the twenty-eighteen, we'll come back with ordinances to actually adopt, so, yeah.
To adopt.
All right. Basically, based on Robin's recommendation.
Exactly.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I guess I will, yeah.
Okay, great. So, any opposed? So the motion carries. Thank you very much. We have deferred on item A, H8, so we're moving on into item H9, which is presentation possible action or resolution to approve the revised site plan for Dutchman's Harvest located Savannah Road, Sussex County tax map 335-8.00-36.07 and 36.03 owner BB Medical Center slash OA Vantage Point from number two LLC. So we've had this discussion before and Janelle, you want to talk to us about this?
I'd be happy to, thank you. Just so, the record had been left open, staff had not received any additional comments regarding the change. And again, this is just for a change in the, the placement of the, the units of the site plan, all the existing conditions would still be in effect as previously approved.
Question, Mayor? Do you know, in your write-up, you, you said the previous site plan regulations were placed on February 11, 2019. The new regulations went into effect May 1, 2019. I guess that was after the first application had been filed before the revised application had been filed. What, what regulations applied to the revised application?
The previous regulations, because it's still the same application.
Same, same regulations.
Correct.
Then I've got a, a question for Preston if if he's still here.
I think he is.
And Preston, I've, first of all, I wanted to say that your September 9 letter to the Planning Commission and to the council, I found it very useful. Thank you for, for that, the clarity and comprehensiveness of that. My only question is, what does the elimination of garages, which are places you park cars, to the capacity of the parking lots, given the, that the number of people who are going to be in these buildings is not changing? And there was a trade-off, as I recall, between water retention ponds and parking spaces originally. That would be my question to Preston.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what you mean by a trade-off between water retention ponds and park, I mean, I guess in theory, if you have fewer parking spots, you have more space available for stormwater retention ponds. But the
Sorry.
There was a lot more impervious area on the old plant, mainly because not only did you have the, the surface level area required for garages that is not required when you don't have garages, but all of those had drive aisles or kind of driveways off of the main drive aisles that extended, we tried to extend them almost the length of a car, but based on your code and based on the fact that they weren't, the fire marshal probably would frown upon us parking there. We did not count those spots. So from a total number of parking space, total number of approved and recognized parking space standpoint, we're about the same.
Thank you.
We just, we just have less impervious area due to what I just explained earlier.
That's, that's a net benefit. Thank you.
Any other questions? Tim, did you have a question?
Me? No.
Yeah. I saw your screen light up. I thought maybe I could. Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding this?
I'm going to approve the revised site plan.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Is there a second? Thank you, Tim. So we have a motion and a second to approve this revised site plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then moving on to item H10, is presentation possible action on a report of the annexation committee on 1145 Savannah Road. Bonnie, you were chairing this committee and thank you very much. I thank all four of you for your work on this. Want to talk to us about this?
I was chairing this committee, thanks to councilperson Morgan nominating honor. And it was an honor. It was fun to work with people. This is a proposed annexation at the request of the owner of the parcel located 1145 Savannah Road, which is a property contiguous to the city limits and therefore annexable. Under section 3, 3A is an apple of the charter of the city of Lewis. When an annexation is requested, you have to come up with a ad hoc committee of no fewer than three councilpersons to investigate the advantages or disadvantages of the annexation to the city and the applicant. Because the applicant, because the, the owner of the property here requested annexation, we assume that it's advantageous to them, because otherwise, why would they have sought annexation? So the question is whether it is advantageous or disadvantageous to the city of Lewis. On the, on the, on the agenda item, you can see the full report of the annexation committee, which consists of basically four parts. We examined, one councilperson took each of the following city services, utilities, zoning and finances, and you can review those, that, the specifics of those investigations. So we held a meeting last Thursday pursuant to appropriate notice and open to the public to discuss this, and at the end of the hearing, we took a vote and unanimously voted to recommend to council, the full council, that annexation was in the best interests of the city and that therefore the city should move forward with annexation of the parcel and that the zoning of general commercial should be assigned to the property upon annexation with the understanding that modifications will be needed because the city code does not encompass or address the intended use for this parcel, which is as a nano or micro brewery with a small tasting room. So that's, I, that's the synopsis of the report. Does anyone want to add anything about their sections or the discussion? Dean, it's submitted.
Okay, thank you very much. You guys did a great job of a very comprehensive review. I noticed that the applicant is on with us tonight as well. And we do, we do have the revisions to the code that will still need to be made. So what we're looking here for is an, an action to accept this report, and then we would need to address the modifications to the code in order to go forward with the complete annexation.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Please do.
And I think that I owe Tim this yet again for it, may, may we ask the applicant if they're planning to use one of the buildings as a residence? The, the reason I ask is that the code for general commercial only permits residents, residents on, on a floor above the use and in connection with it. So that was the, the question.
Okay, well, the Jones are here. Christine is here. I think her husband Dave is with her. If we could bring her on, that would be great. She could answer the question. Thank you for joining us. You're muted. If you could unmute yourself and answer Mr. Morgan's question, that would be helpful.
Oh, hey, guys, how are you?
Thank you for joining us this evening, Dave.
Yes, we are not going to use the property as a residence, no.
Thanks. Takes care of that question, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the table? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept this report?
I would move that, I was saying, what I said was that's the shortest answer we've had all night to any question. I
It's also the shortest discussion we've had all night.
Um, I would move the city council, accept the report of the annexation committee and move forward with drafting appropriate changes to ordinance to facilitate annexation of 1145 Savannah Road.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Rob. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Christine and Dave Jones for being here this evening. Okay, we can move then on to item H11, which is discussing the possible action regarding the planning commission's action plan. We talked about this last month. Thank you, Janelle, and members of the planning commission for all their work on developing this list. We were to provide some feedback regarding prioritization of this list, and Janelle, would you like to walk us through this?
Thank you. So members of council did provide feedback that was updated in the file and part of the agenda that noted the
Bosh.
The recommendations from council, and they also had some comments, so I, I added those into the comments. There was a lot of consistency between planning commission comments or ranking, so those are actually highlighted in yellow, which I think helps provide a little bit more information to the commission as they finalize this report and as you finalize your information to the commission. Again, this is kind of working on, the commission was asked to look through and make sure that what they're working on is consistent with the the pathway of the council. So we are all working together on the same projects or moving forward together. So as you notice, a lot of the items were categorized. I would note that a lot of the, some of the the items probably will be picked up with like one of the bigger items. There's a couple of items that, you know, they're, they're going to be, you know, it says, look at one thing, and it'll probably pick up a couple of those other items potentially as the, the items move down the, the list. So you guys did provide recommendations, especially like a lot of the stuff in the floodplain, they'll probably all be kind of looked at some, probably simultaneously, or get kind of combined into like one larger project. So this will actually help the commission prioritize projects moving forward, especially through the next year. Again, there's no expectation of this list being accomplished in the next year. There's a lot of projects, a lot of them actually could take actually probably the next year just to get them finalized. And also recognize some other minor changes that, that the council and the commission can work on as well. So just, I put, I took the, the listings back together. If there wasn't consistency, I, I added that. Or I ranked, you know, you can see some as like low, medium, when there wasn't an option to, to go in the middle. And then I'm happy to answer any questions.
As you noted, I think there's a lot of concern here about floodplain as being a high priority as well as open space and setbacks, which is very much in keeping with the kinds of conversations that we've been hearing and the kinds of concerns that we've been hearing from the public. So that was pretty much anticipated, but good to see where we come out with this and comments from the table?
I'll just say, I want, I want to thank the, the planning commission and then for bifurcating the longer list that they had, which made this much more manageable. It's a very ambitious list. As Janelle said, it's, this is, none of this is going to be accomplished tomorrow. But it's, it certainly is roadmap and shows the, the breadth of, of the activities that the planning commission works on for the, for the public. So that's, that's all good.
Other, anyone else have comments? So we, would you, we, we entertain a motion here to accept the prioritization of this list as we have, we, as, as been recommended?
I, do we have to do anything with this? I thought we were just getting comments.
I thought you too.
Okay, if that's what, if that's, I didn't know if you wanted to send anything back to count, to the planning commission regarding this or not.
Oh, I think this back, but, but I don't know how we, I mean, there's places where we have issues that don't agree with theirs. I mean, I, I don't, I guess it depends on whether you think this is a directive or a commentary.
That's a question.
I saw more as a comment. I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, listening to the meeting, I don't think planning commissioner was planning on us having us send it back to them. I think it was just their view on where things were versus how we're going to prioritize that.
Okay.
From the commission's perspective, this will actually go back to them next week, and then they will have, make their, take their final decision on, because they wanted your input on ranking the projects that they are going to work on for the next year. So they're going to take your, your guidance that you've provided and then use that to help finalize in the larger projects and the, the projects to work on for the next year.
I guess I misinterpreted what Drew had said then.
So I don't know that we have to do anything other, unless there's disagreement at council, I don't know that we have to do anything other than
Send it back.
Send it back.
Yeah. I think you're probably right. I think if, if they want to come forward with questions where there's a discrepancy between what we recommended, what they want to do, then they could raise those questions with us. But I think Janelle makes a good point when she says that a lot of these, some of these lesser items will be probably combined into bigger projects. Any other comments from the table? I noticed, you know, one of the things where I can see discrepancies is the review of conditions for subdivision. It was, it was a medium there and it was a high priority from council. I think that, that's one of the questions that we have seen as a recurrent theme.
Yeah, I think that helps provide the commission with, with a better understanding that they ranked it as maybe medium, but maybe that does need to get bumped up a little bit based on your recommendations, and I think that's what they were looking for.
Okay. Yeah. So I think the, the discussion that occurs at, at the next planning commission, as they get this feedback from us, will be helpful. There's no further comment, then there's no action necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Janelle. Moving then on to item H12, is presentation of possible action or report and recommendations for the downtown parking ad hoc committee. First of all, I want to thank Andrew for working on this as a co-chair. Thank you very much. Also want to recognize Betsy Reamer, the executive director of the chamber, Matt DiSabatino, Derek Ward, Nancy Stacy, Reverend Ross and Carolyn Marshall and Charlie O'Donnell, and of course Anne Marie for their work on this committee. The committee met over the course of several months here and came up with several different recommendations, which are included in the packet, some of which we discussed last month, and Andrew, please speak up and add to anything that we have here. You know, the city, we talked extensively about the MNT parking lot situation. That seemed to be moving along very well. I think I covered that last month when we recognized that MNT is continuing to work with us on that and willing to move forward. However, last year, in spite of the pandemic, we also had other issues relating to moving on with that due to the cost related. We've gone, Charlie O'Donnell worked with the, the idea of revising the plan and bringing those costs down so that those costs are now in the 16 to $27,000 range, which will be split amongst the three participants. That would be the city, MNT and the Hotel Rodney. So that, we're still working on some final estimates there, but, and the lease is still pending MNT's approval, but it is moving along. So the committee does recommend that, that we move forward with that. We also looked at the fact that there's a lot of, of land or a lot of on-street parking, which is not delineated, particularly in the area of Third Street and on Park Avenue and Ship Carpenter, and there's a lot of other delineated spaces around, but by delineating spaces down by the Historic Society and in the, in the Park, in the Park Avenue Ship Carpenter Street area, we will pick up approximately 54 spaces. which would, could be easily identified as additional no-charge parking or non-neared parking. We did also look at the Schley Avenue parking lot to improve access and utilization. We came looking at that. One of the problems there has been, there is no landscaping there. It's a rather poorly identified lot. And it also been other issues in that area where the construction lay-down area is in that, in that area as well. And we looked at the idea of rotating the lot basically ninety degrees so that it would agree on, there would be an entrance off of Schley Avenue rather than the current entrance. There are two entrances, one off of Schley and one off of Franklin. And, and do some landscaping and fencing to offer a buffer from the residential area. That came in at an estimated cost of approximately ninety-two thousand dollars.
Can I interrupt for one second there? I was, I, I'm, don't get me wrong. I think this, this is definitely something that needs to be attended to, but I was surprised that it was almost a hundred thousand dollars to do this work.
I'll certainly invite Charlie to join us and he can offer more comments about that. Anne Marie, if you could bring him on.
Particularly for a lot that, as the report recognizes, the public doesn't use.
Right.
You have to ask whether that is, I mean, there's a chicken and egg issue, right? If it looks better and has better signage and lighting and all that sort of thing, will people actually use it? But it's, it's an awful lot of money for
One of the things that's driving that cost is the installation of ADA crosswalks. Because you, there's, you need to cross both Franklin and Schley in order to avoid utility poles that are in the way to try and create another crossing. That would only request, require one crosswalk. So, that, Charlie, you might want to comment on that.
Yeah, there, there's a few things in here. You know, it's not just the parking lot, re-arrangement, I guess, you know, moving it ninety degrees from where it is right now. That's certainly part of it. But also the charging stations that are at the old power plant and of the existing parking lot would need to be relocated and the wires extended to new spaces in the new parking lot. As the mayor mentioned, there's three ADA ramps and two crosswalks to provide access to the Franklin Avenue sidewalk system. As part of this, there's some landscaping on the Franklin Avenue side to sort of shield the whole parking lot from the residential area. Right now, we have bike racks, five hoop-style bike racks for ten bicycles and a bench included. And also as part of that ninety thousand dollars or ninety-two thousand dollars or two streetlights, including wiring and hookup. And that's a total project estimate. So, that includes GMV's fees for engineering and construction fees as well. So, I don't know if that cleared it up. Any, one other thing is that as part of that ninety-two, there's an alternate item for fencing and landscaping on the power plant side of the parking lot as well.
Is part of this, Charlie, to improve the appearance for the neighboring homes?
Yes, I think the mayor mentioned that is that right now, at the bike trail end of Franklin Avenue, it's been used as a staging area for various construction projects, which has been a little unsightly for the residents, residents that live nearby. So, that's definitely part of it, part of it. Although I have to say, and Andrew and Ted can add to this probably, it's, it's also part of the, a greater plan of, you know, encouraging people who want to go downtown to use this lot. And I don't think all the i's have been dotted or t's crossed on exactly how we're going to encourage people to use this lot, but there's been a lot of discussion on that particular topic as well.
Are you talking about bicyclists?
No, more vehicles. The bicyclist mayor and I have been talking lately. It, it may not be as important to the bicyclist as we once thought it might be, since it's right there by the trail and that. The idea is like, you know, would bicyclists really lock their bikes and walk up to town from there rather than just ride their bike up there?
Right.
You know, so that part of it might be coming out.
Yeah, that part might come out.
Rob, I think what you might be alluding to is there was feedback from the, some of the neighbors that people are, use that area as a trailhead to get, so they'll bring their bike to that area and use that as an entry point for the trail. So, the idea that they might use that lot similar to how they might at the library, just as a tra, as a trailhead.
And then if they wanted to go to, into town, they might bike there instead of, instead of driving.
Right, right. There also, we may be some cost real, savings realized in that I've spoken with Darren and the idea where we originally positioned the, the charging stations could be modified into, so it would be in a straight line run rather than putting it in a corner, which was on the original plan that Charlie developed. And that would perhaps realize some savings there.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Charlie, does your job, does your proposal include paving the parking lot?
No, right now, it just consists of recycled concrete, four to six-inch base, and then one to, pardon me, two to, two inches of what's called blue chip stone, similar to what's down at the Canalfront Park parking lot. And what's there now, actually?
Yeah.
So, the, the actual surface that you drive on and walk on would be that blue chip material. Is that correct?
Yes, half-inch stone.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Charlie, is that, is that blue chip stone ADA compliant?
I don't, I don't know that I have the answer for that, because so much of the ADA is about grade. Bonnie, I have to get an answer to that and whether we would need
I've often wondered about it down at Canalfront Park because it's uneven. But that said, it's, it's a very small stone. So, I just don't know the answer.
He went as first, go ahead.
We only have one ADA space. So, if we had to pave that one space, that's what we would do.
Okay, well, all I'd ask, Charlie, is if you could bring the cost of the, the MNT lot down from where it started, which was very high, down to something very reasonable. My money's on you to do it again, Ron, on this. And we, we certainly don't need landscaping on the, on the power plant side. I mean,
Landscaping on the, on the Franklin Avenue side.
Yeah, on the Franklin Avenue side, absolutely. But on the other side, I, I don't think
Yeah. That was, that was a request that came out of the committee discussion. I don't even know if it was the committee that came up with that, but I just put it in there because I wanted to put everything that was being discussed in there.
Right.
Warren Goldie was offering up some of those free holly trees. We could use those.
Yeah, that's an idea.
Right.
What was that, Bonnie?
I think it's the Delaware State Tree.
The holly was, not necessarily that
Right.
species.
So, and Charlie, did I just seen you say that there, there was also like a plan B or, for possibly some kind of fencing along the parking lot area that would separate it from the BPW power plant? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we were just talking about, that, that with some landscaping that was just an alternate idea that may or may not be desirable, mostly in terms of cost and for other reasons.
I do think from the, separating the lay-down area on the BPW's, lay-down area from this lot would be helpful, not necessarily landscaping. But I think it would help delineate the space.
Hmm, Ted, you might be able to answer this. I think we knew coming in tonight that we were going to need to massage this some and work it, work it towards its completion. And I'm guessing that's still where we're at. Is that true?
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
All right.
Okay, we could then move on to the fourth recommendation was that we consider the improvements, the Otis Smith part. And there's where there's a very big discrepancy. We looked at the idea that you could do improvements there with, again, Charlie can talk more specifically about this. That would be, as you may know, this is a lot that's never really had defined spaces except along the sycamore tree line that's closest to the Beacon Motel. And the rest of it's just open undefined parking. And what Charlie came up with was a plan to better define that. The paved area that runs off of Savannah Road and runs up against the side of the Daily Market Building is actually a city street. And it's used for delivery trucks and things to get around to the back of the building. So, we took into consideration leaving that open. And then the rest of it, Charlie went ahead and delineated spaces in that we came, he came up with two proposals based on the comments from the, from the committee. One was to do it all in, in, again, crushed concrete and define the spaces. And then, and/or there was concern about it being in the recharge area or in a floodplain. And should we be doing something to encourage putting in a pervious surface? And Charlie, you want to talk about what you came up with there a little bit?
Yeah, with the with the same, basically the same parking lot section of stone with the crushed recycled concrete underneath and regular stone on top. We had prices from twenty-one thousand, six hundred to, I think it was twenty-three thousand dollars. But when you looked at the permeable paving, which would just add permeable pavers, concrete pavers in the parking areas, not the drive aisle. Trying to look that up, Mayor.
I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand.
Is it on page, the next page?
Yeah, there it is, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Right.
Charlie, recycled concrete with the blue, blue chip surface. That's pervious too, isn't it?
Well, it tightens up pretty good. I would, it's, it's more pervious than asphalt paving, but it's not as pervious as a permeable paver system.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I would, I would note that with this hundred and twenty-nine thousand, it's only putting pervious in the driveline, not putting pervious in the parking spaces. So, that, the parking spaces would still be blue chip.
No, that's the, it's the opposite, Mayor.
And the reverse, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's, it's, you're, you're only going to get part of it as, as a pervious surface. So, it's a big discrepancy.
What is the existing, I think Ted, you described it as a city street that runs from Savannah up alongside the Daily Market Building. Is that, is that paved with asphalt or is that mostly gravel? Is there gravel in there?
Clamshell.
No, the, the actual, as you come off of Savannah Road, it's the piece of that asphalt that is, that is in very good condition. It comes off of Savannah Road and it runs all the way to the rear of the Daily Market Building. And it's, it's actually a lane.
And that is all asphalt, is that correct?
It's all impervious asphalt.
Okay, thank you. And it does not need to be serviced. It doesn't need to be repaved at this time, is that correct?
Oh, no, it was done within the last twelve years.
And who paved it?
We did. It was an eighty thousand dollar contract.
Well, should we, does this, does this, does this need a name or something? I mean, I had no idea that was a city name, a city street.
It's called Smith Avenue.
It should have a name.
It is called Smith Avenue.
Huh.
Did you learn?
Yeah, I think it shows up that way on Google Maps even. I have to look again.
Look that one up.
But, but then Andrew's absolutely correct that everything, once you get off of that, that driveline or that, that street and everything else that's back there is crushed clamshell or stone.
Okay. And is that parcel in the excellent recharge area?
Yes, I'd have to go back and look.
Yes, it is.
I think it is, yeah. I think it is.
And that was one of the questions I wanted, I should have asked about Schley. I had it written down to ask, is Schley, let's go backwards for a second, is Schley in the, in the excellent recharge?
Sorry, I'm pretty sure that it's not. I'll pull up the map and check, but
Thank you.
That Janelle says it's not.
Yeah, it is not.
Okay.
It's close on the Smith Avenue.
Yeah, it's not. I don't think it's a hundred percent, is it, Charlie?
Well, the map I have of the excellent recharge area is hard to tell where the streets are. They're, they're there, but you gotta play around with it.
I don't know. It probably is then, yeah.
Yeah, I think it probably is.
I think it is, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's a code about that, isn't there?
Okay. All right, so that was, that's the Otis Smith. There's, as we said, there's quite a discrepancy there in the price point. Then, I think the next item on the agenda is the, the idea that BB Hospital is willing to allow us to use their at-grade parking down behind the hospital at the end of Market Street. But it, it has no signage at all that would indicate anybody could use it. And I think that's something that would make a big difference, offer an opportunity there. And the next item then is install signage to identify the availability of parking. And that really gets back to the merge presentation that we had. And what the cost might be associated with doing just the first phase of that, which would be the pedestrian and vehicular parking portion of it. And Anne Marie, that was a hundred and twenty what, thousand? Looks like Anne Marie left us for a moment.
Hey Ted, may I ask you a question? May I interrupt you and ask you a question, please, about the BB parking? I, I attended some of your meetings, not all of them. So, if this was discussed, I missed it. Was there ever any discussion of the possible use of the BB lots that are actually on Savannah Road that are, I think of them as being kind of opposite the hospital. Yeah, opposite the hospital on the south side of Savannah.
They're privately owned.
Oh, I thought they were owned by the hospital. Don't they use those lots?
They do use them, but they're privately owned.
Oh. Huh, well.
So, Ted, do we have a, I mean, I was just adding this stuff up and between the MNT lot, the Schley Avenue lot, the high price on the Otis, the higher end on the Otis Smith lot and the way, the, the parking Wayfair stuff, which I realize is more than just this. We're, we're, we're north of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars
Yes.
for not a whole lot of parking spaces. And this is a very, just, I mean, it's just, I just want everyone to understand as we go through this, this is a very, very expensive undertaking we're talking about here.
And we may, we may have to implement some of this over a period of time, you know.
Did, do, how, then how do you want to, I mean, are we accepting this? How do you want to?
I'm hoping, all I'm asking is tonight that we accept the report. A lot of this has to go back into the budget here, budget process. These are recommendations. They all have numbers associated with them. And some of them, you know, will have to, you know, one of the biggest things really is signage.
Yeah, well, and, I mean, and there's some of them that are more time-critical than others, like the MNT lot, which yeah, that needs to move forward faster. And that, that's a low-ticket item, but
And the, and the delineation of the spaces along Third Street and Ship Carpenter, that can be that can be done by our city maintenance department.
Yeah.
We have a striping machine and, and all of that. So those are things that are relatively low hanging fruit. It's to make some of the biggest changes.
Is, is our machine, is it thermoplastic or is it?
It's paint.
Do we have any idea what that cost is, Emery, for the painting of those fifty four spots, I think it is?
I mean, it's the cost of paint. We buy paint every year to, to re-strike. It's not insignificant, but it's not, it's not, it would be absorbed in the operating budget, right?
Okay, all right. So that's a low hanging fruit, we're gonna say.
And Bonnie, I would say that if the, if the council decides to go with recycled concrete and chipped stone at Smith Avenue, that pushes that down into a relatively reasonable number around twenty two thousand dollars. So then I think, I think the big ticket items are more the Schley Avenue and the signage, if I'm here.
That's the biggest ticket item.
Oh, I completely agree. I, I just wanted to add up the numbers. A lot of this we have to do. Don't get me wrong. I'm not, I, I just, you know, there's, there, if, if, if you want to do this, then you can't do that. So
Right.
Limits how much money is available.
Yep.
You're on parking and signage. Can you help me distinguish number six from number eight?
Well, they, they, they really are not too different. The, the basically one really references the merge report. And the other one is really, you know, it was, the merge report thing was put in later and it probably should have been, it should have been merged with the, with six.
So, uh, which is merged, six? Or eight?
Merge, eight talks about merge, the merge report itself.
Okay, because you said, I was just six, I thought you said a hundred and twenty K for the implementing the merge.
And the merge project, Emory, is that a hundred and twenty seven, a hundred and twenty six?
I thought it was like a hundred and three for that first phase.
I've got it someplace. I don't have it with me here.
Right.
I had it.
That's not in this, that's not for tonight though, is it, the merge?
It's gonna be, all of this is going to come up in a budget hearing.
Right. Right.
Well, I'm, well, I'm sorry, Mayor, you were going through them one by one.
Okay, that's okay. Well, then, you know, the, the next item is the, the, that we review as, as a mayor, council review the parking fees and hours of operation for possible adjustments, knowing that meters downtown are at a dollar an hour, they, and our hours of operation are nine AM to six PM. Excuse me, eight PM. They, and we changed that to eight PM from six to eight PM relatively recently. Uh, and we had feedback from the merchants that while they appreciated the hour, the, the not charging from nine until noon this past year, they did not feel it appreciably added to their business. And that it was not something that they were specifically asking that we continue. We had originally heard that that might be, but we did not hear that from the committee. Would you agree, Andrew?
Uh, yeah. I mean, I don't think it, they were able to show that it was driving business. I think there was some, I don't think they necessarily supported raising the costs of, I think they put that to us as council to decide whether that's an appropriate thing to do. I don't think they endorsed that meterless Mondays or what have you was working as a catalyst or not.
Yeah. And then Betsy Reamer did convene, she's on as well. She may want to join us for a moment. She did convene a, a, a meeting of business downtown businesses to discuss the parking. And out of that came, I think, no comment about the benefits or no feeling that the, that the benefits of having the meters off from nine until noon added greatly, significantly to their business. Betsy, you're on if you want to unmute yourself. However, I think in the report, the, well, Betsy, Betsy, you're there, you want to comment?
I did, yep, thank you. Andrew is correct that they did not want to take a position on changing the amount of money that was charged. But the majority of people, and it was a small group, it wasn't the whole group that was there, felt that it was a great PR move to, to do it, but that they couldn't verify that it, it helped their business, bottom line.
Thank you. Uh, if you, if we consider the information that Ellen Rain provided us at our, at our budget hearing on Friday, I think she indicated that raising the meters to a dollar and a half an hour would generate approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, if they were up normal hours of operation, that was using two thousand nineteen revenues, which would be more accurate than the two thousand twenty revenues.
The other thing that we talked about, and again, to Betsy's point, I don't think the merch is necessarily supported or otherwise, but if we're, if we're not going to charge for these lots like Schley or Smith lot, do, do we charge more in the areas where we are metering as a strategy to push folks into those free lots? And if so, what's the breaking, you know, what's the price point where that'll convince you, I'll walk, you know, three extra blocks?
So how do you communicate that, Andrew? How would you communicate? Yeah. How would you communicate to the public that year, there's free parking two blocks away versus paying a buck fifty here at the curve?
I guess the paying a merge a hundred and fifty K.
Well, I think there's the merge thing, but we also, one of the things that we talked about was the idea of using social media posts and Betsy has been working on, there's already, the chamber already has a map that indicates where parking lots are. Uh, and she's working on updating that. And I believe Emery's been working on having something that we could have on our website that would help people with some wayfinding. Is that correct, Emery?
Well, technically it's Janelle, but yes, Janelle and a couple of other staff are kind of working with her on it as well to build a, a section of our website about parking that would have an interactive map and try to, to promote the free parking.
I think there's some other idea, like you said, I think Ted, around social media otherwise, but for instance, at the Schley lot, maybe we consider allowing Lewis Bike Shop or Sea Green to put a temporary business down there. We let them have a license. And that would encourage people to rent their bikes right there. I mean, there are, there are ways to get people there.
And it's, it's sort of a work in progress, I think, because we even had discussions about real time information e- either through people's phones or through some, you know, sign, changeable sign on site somewhere that says, hey, there's ten parking spaces here or fifteen over there. But that, I mean, that's down the road a little bit, I think, some of that stuff.
And I think you could, like I said, put a little bit of the burden on the, the merchants. Like I would assume, you know, Matt, Matt Carter's down there, his question, he, he could direct his customers, affect that there's parking there. Or like I said, we can maybe give other licenses out to Schley Lot or some of these other spots to bring the, bring the attention there.
Then the final discussion point was a valet versus our jitney service. And I think the, we never really got to a serious discussion about that, but I think what we, where we ended up was that if you implement all these other things, what, what would a jitney or a valet service look like? First of all, they would be, they would be private enterprise, not something the city would operate. Uh, and so if a vendor came forward, we'd want to talk to them, learn more about what they were talking about and what their costs for operation would be. But if, I think Charlie, your number was, we generated the identification with all these various non-charge areas that were just under a hundred spaces that would be delineated.
That's correct, yes.
And, um, that, that would, that would certainly can add appreciably, because we only have about two hundred and seventy spots now downtown. It would make an appreciable difference in what's available and that the public could be informed of through some signage system, social media system, and it helped them identify where they can find parking that's in a reasonable but walking distance from downtown.
Mayor, if I, with the minutes, and I thought that Andrew's formulation was something that might be added to this, uh, recommendation number nine. The end of it, or if the city is approached by someone with a viable jitney or valet service, rather than waiting for a hundred spaces to be created at a huge expense.
Yeah, that's, that is, uh, yeah, and I think that is in the, in the, in the report, it's in, at the last sentence or the next to last sentence in the committee recognized these services most likely be offered by a vendor. Should a vendor propose such a service, the city should consider the, consider the proposal. That was the final sentence of that, of that portion of the report.
So to make the recommendation fit with the report, we might modify it in that way.
Okay, I'd like to talk to that also, if you don't mind. That, that, I, I really am intrigued by this idea of the valet jitney service. I'd like to explore it more. And the, the language in this paragraph is, shows hope, but I also should think it kind of shows passivity on the city's part, whereas I think are we, are we going to actually solicit an RFP? Are we going to actually try to talk to cultivate a relationship with vendors? With, to see if in fact they might, there might be interest? Because otherwise is, it, it doesn't offer, it, it just points us in that direction. It doesn't move the ball down the field.
Glenn, did, did Rehoboth had some bicycle jitney service a few summers ago, or do they have one in place now?
Are you asking me?
No, I was asking Glenn.
Glenn's muted.
Yeah, they've talked about it from time to time. They never did anything formal or had any pilot programs, but they've, they've talked about it. I mean, for several years, it comes up and down, but they've never proceeded with it.
Yeah, and on the, we've looked, actually, Tim, just a little background, the city looked at jitney service several years ago. And it was incredibly expensive. If I remember correctly, the, the, the individual who gave the presentation was with the Jolly Trolley and I believe the statistic he used was that municipalities through fees and advertising and things like that recover, I want to say it was between twelve and fifteen percent of the cost of operating by a jitney. So it's very, very expensive. The other thing is, we did have an initiative seven years ago from three of the restaurateurs downtown for a valet service. They, they didn't, I mean, you know, they didn't kind of follow through with it, but it, it, my recollection is it kind of founded on the question of where the, first of all, there was no discussion of where the cars would go, but second, so you know, it's like, all right, you've got a valet for these cars, but where do you park cars, right?
Right.
The other thing was that there was a, a lot of discussion about where the pickup and drop off spot would be. And the proposal was that basically all of the, or special part of the parking spaces in front of the buttery would be lost to the city in terms of revenue. And that would be the pickup spot and, and drop off spot. But the problem with that was it would back everything directly into that already difficult intersection at Savannah Second.
Yeah.
So it, it, that's just a little background that it, it has come up before. But there were just, there, it, it ran into a whole bunch of practical and financial issues.
Right. I remember years ago, attending, attending a meeting with the Jolly Trolley owner, I believe he was. Yeah, I remember part, some part of that. But anyway, I think that, I think, I think it's, I think if we're going to be successful creating solutions to our parking, if we have a parking crunch, is, uh, it's going to be a blend of solutions. It's just not going to be one solution.
Well, that's what, what this report recommends.
Right.
You know, on Bonnie's recollection of that second proposal from the restaurateurs, I actually, I remember having a better impression of it than, than Bonnie did. They did have, they had worked out a good deal. They, as Bonnie says, they asked for the spaces in front of the buttery to be given to them, and that would back up people into the crosswalk, and that was the problem. But they had a proposal for runners and the people who would park the cars in Schley and Otis Smith. They, they had a good deal worked out, but I think the thing that killed them was what you're referring to last, Bonnie, that traffic problem.
Yeah, that, and I also recall getting some feedback from the people on Franklin who were not particularly excited that their street was going to be the, the, the one that the street that the cars went, you know, ran to and all that. So there was, there was also some concern about, about that.
Yeah.
We're still trying to push traffic over there though.
Yeah, and back to the jitney thing. I mean, the initial proposal for the jitney was, you know, we, we looked at the idea of trying to create a jitney that would be, uh, someone else would assume all the responsibilities for. And what we got from the Jolly Trolley was a proposal that we buy the bus, uh, which was in the range of a quarter of a million dollars. And then we would own it and we would still have to maintain it. They would operate it for us at a fee, but we would still have to buy the physical equipment.
Are you going to drive the bus, Ted?
Not me.
I, I'm just going to say, dealing with the trash trucks doesn't make me want to buy a bus. But then there were all these questions about what, if you did buy a vehicle, what kind of vehicle would you buy? Because if your, if your main idea for this jitney is to take people down to the beach, then you need one that has, you know, is designed for lots of freight. You know, all people's stuff and their bikes and their, you know, whatever it would be. So, you know, and, and what size? You know, do
But that would be a different type of, that'd be a different scale jitney, I think. Would it not, the people, you know, that which serves the beach area?
The question was, did you circulate? Did you, if so, where do you go? And the longer, you know, if you, if your circulation pattern, the longer it is, the longer people wait. And the longer people wait, the less likely they are to use the jitney.
Right. I'm aware of that, right. I understand. Well, okay.
So this, basically, the committee's report provides a lot of ideas about what can be done, some very costly, some without a lot of cost. But I think almost anything that has a cost to it has a, has a budgetary concern. And we can flesh out more of those as we have our budget discussion.
Okay, nice to get a start, Mayor. So apart from moving to receive it, can we ask them that, that they go ahead with two and five?
Sure. Well, but five is really part, five is really part of, you know, it would be part of the merge program.
Okay, well then two.
I think two is fine.
So I would move that we receive the report and, and adopt recommendation two. And the others for further consideration.
Okay. You want to have any, okay, then we can talk about the others at another time. Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
And now we can talk, can we talk now?
I think you've been talking, but what do you want to say?
Wait a minute, Ted, I'm just getting started. Hey, uh, my question is, because I haven't gone through this before, when will we get around to talking about the other recommendations if we are acting on number two tonight? How, what is, when, when did we do that? When do we get to talk about the other ones?
Well, I'm waiting on the lease. We're still waiting on the lease from M and T. They have not cut us the final leash yet. So once we have that, we'll, we'll have that to react, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And do you have any idea how soon that will be coming?
I talked to them last Friday. They told me they were reviewing it for, and we submitted some changes based on the idea that uh, one thing I didn't mention was that Bike Ped Committee recommended that we add some bicycle parking there. Uh, that had to go back to M and T for further consideration. We did identify some spaces where we could put some bike park, bike racks that would not interfere with the number of spaces that were there, but they need, it's their lot, they need to sign off on it. Uh, so that's, that's
One thing I would add is that those things with the price tag, I One thing I would add is that those things with the price tag, I expect we will discuss at the March fifth budget meeting, when we're gonna be talking about capital projects.
Okay. And so we don't have to, we don't come together again at a regular meeting to discuss a regular count monthly meeting, is that correct? We'll do it during the budget piece?
Right.
Is that, okay, thank you.
I think, you know, the 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 merge project is also a capital project, so all of that will
And I looked that up, it's, the estimate was a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
That's one oh seven, okay.
But that's an estimate, it would go to bid and and
Right, that's just their estimate, but obviously they're doing their, this type of programming all over the country. Uh so they have a pretty good handle on what things cost.
Right.
Okay, so we, so we have a motion and a second on the floor that we accept the report and uh direct the street, the maintenance department to proceed with the delineation space, which is item recommendation number two. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. So then we have one other item we're going to consider this evening, which was I eight, and that's a presentation of possible action on a request of Selco Partnership to renew the conditional use agreement for the cell phone tower located at forty-one K Penelope Drive. Um they've had this uh arrangement with us for a number of years. Emery, is there anything here you, that we should know about this?
Um I would defer to Janelle on this one.
Okay, Janelle.
There have been no changes since last year. So it's still compliance, correct, it's still in compliance with the conditional use.
Any questions from the table or comments?
I have a question. Uh in the cover letter that they sent, uh this is from Mr. Tracy. Uh he uh suggests, or he asks a questions about uh he asks a question, has that been addressed, has he received a reply?
I know I've talked to him about a number of different things, um I just can't think of, top of my head if I've answered that one.
Okay.
Is Mr. Tracy with us tonight?
He is not.
Okay. Any other? Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve this conditional use agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Bonnie, second, Rob, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, okay. So at this point, we will adjur, we will recess until we take our meeting back up to consider the one deferred item uh and the other new business items that uh we did not get to tonight, I would note that we've been at this uh three hours, a little over three hours, uh and uh I think that's glad that we, I'm glad that we decided to take a break. Uh I think, if we've gone through the rest of these items, we might have been here another three hours, uh so Bonnie shaking her head, so uh, uh your cat wouldn't have put up with it that long, is that right?
Since you're, since you're just recessing, just for the benefit of the public, you'll be reconvening on Thursday, uh February eleventh at six thirty PM.
That's correct.
Right.
And and we will put out a new uh Zoom link.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a new Zoom list, and also the agenda uh that is currently posted for Thursday evening will be revised to reflect the items that
I posted it, I reposted it already.
Okay, great, thank you.
We do need to add the packet material, so um that, that'll be taken care of tomorrow.
Okay, great, so that, that should take care of that. So we have fifteen people that are still with us from the beginning of this evening. Thank you all for your patience and being with us, and we will consider this mo, this meeting recessed until Thursday at six thirty, thank you.
Alright. Thank you, good night.
Good night.